All right, let's call to order the December 13th, 2022 School Board Regular Meeting. With some changes in our agenda, we're going to be reading the district's vision before every meeting, so I'd like to do that now. The school district of Manatee County will be an exemplary, student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. With that, I'd like to invite Pastor Rick Sterrett from Trinity United Methodist Church up to the podium for the invocation, and if everybody can stand, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, today we thank you for every person here, for each mind and heart that fills this room. God, you know what they're setting out to accomplish this morning, so I pray that you would give them wisdom as they discuss the many important issues that lie before them. I ask that you would empower them to make their decisions wisely. And God, send your creative spirit upon them. Open their hearts to recognize your presence among them. May they draw upon the wisdom and the experience of yesterday as they respond to the questions and the concerns of tomorrow. Please give them the freedom to speak the truth boldly with kindness and patience, to listen openly without prejudice. Give them confidence to discover and explore new possibilities. Give them wisdom to discern what is right and good, and courage to participate in your ongoing work. God, also, I want to lift up every principal, assistant principal, teacher, staff member, every child, these people here today, the board members. I'm asking for your continued blessing upon every life. Bless this gathering this morning and all who are present. And we place this meeting now into your hands, trusting you to lead, you to guide, and you to protect our schools as we move forward into the future. We ask this again in the name of your son, Jesus, and everyone said?
Amen.
Have you joined me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may be seated. All right, so moving to number five, information only, the leaves and year-to-date financial statements, no board action required is needed with that item. Item number six, approval of the agenda. We have two agenda amendments. First is, the chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on December 13th, 2022. Agenda updated on December 12th and posted to the district website, manateeschools.net.
I actually have a motion that I'd like to pull some of the items from consent. Is this the time to do that?
First, we need to approve the, these first agenda.
Your approval, okay.
Ones first, so I need a motion to approve these before we move to second.
So moved.
I'll second.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of accepting the agended amendment? Put in your vote now on the system.
Okay, I can find it. I'm four.
Okay, that's fine. Motion passes unanimously.
I'm four.
Five to zero, thank you. Second amendment, but before we get back to you, Ms. Spray, second amendment item that I have is, a superintendent would like to table the resignation of Mr. Mitchell Titlebaum as general counsel. Do we have a motion to table that?
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion? None? With that, let's vote on your, oh, Ms. Messenger, or Ms. Means, do we have that ready for the screen?
It is ready.
We'll do this one, we'll do this one manually. Everybody in favor of tabling the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign? We do have it on the system, so that passes, that amendment passes five to nil. Did we, Ms. Spray?
I want to make a motion to amend the agenda to move consent items one, three, five, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and eighteen to new business. And I'm doing this because I think that there are things that we need to discuss, to the public, for one, but for clarity for us as new board members as well.
Can you, can you say those one more time?
One, three, five, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, eighteen.
Fourteen, fifteen, eighteen.
Yes, sir. And again, these, I'm not pulling these to oppose or do anything like that, I just think that there are some questions that I had on them. When you look at the consent items, it says as routine, I just think that there are some that should be discussed.
So just to clarify, you want these seven consent items to be moved to out-of-consent items and into new business?
Yes, sir. That is my wish, please.
So we've got a motion on the floor.
I'll second.
We've got a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't push my button.
You're fine, go ahead.
Typically, in, before a meeting, we take the opportunity to make sure all of our questions are answered prior to the meeting. I know that I spend time talking to the superintendent, and if I have questions or concerns, I make sure that I have them all addressed then. So my question is, are there questions that you asked that you didn't get an answer to?
I had my briefing with the superintendent. I went through these fairly quickly, then I dove into the back paperwork in these items that brought that to my attention, and I wanted to go deeper into that, but there was a lot to go through in this agenda, and the agenda was published before I had the briefing, actually. So there was a lot that I wanted to discuss publicly. And I, and I have notes, lots of notes, so, you know, as a new board member, I want to make sure that I'm doing my due diligence on, on this, because there's items up here on the consent items that are quite costly.
Are you, are you done, or do you have more? We can always come back to you. You're thinking.
I'm done.
Ms. Chatham.
So the reason I seconded the motion is because I know I've, I've watched many hours of these meetings, and I've seen, for instance, Ms. Messenger often will say things like, "I think that it would be good to have an explanation of this item for the public, because the public should know about this." So I think that's what Ms. Spray is doing at this point, is that maybe, even if her concerns were answered in her meeting with Ms. Saunders, she's saying, "I would like to discuss this in a more public setting." Let's recognize too, also, that we are not allowed to discuss these kind of things amongst board members, and unfortunately, the only time we can talk about it is in these meetings, and it will probably make this meeting longer, but those are the rules of the game, so to speak. So if Ms. Spray feels like that there's more public discussion that needs to be had, so that the public is aware of something, then generally, I'd like to honor those requests.
You're not on the system yet?
No, I, I am.
Okay, well, that's it, go ahead. I saw you, you're good.
Yeah.
Breaking the rules already. I'm just kidding.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with Ms. Messenger that if it's a question that you have, that it should, should be answered prior to the meeting. However, as board members, we all have the right at any meeting to pull something from consent to new business, and that's also something that you can do in your board briefing. You can ask that an item be pulled to consent. But because we all have the ability, the right, to pull something from consent, I'll vote for it, but I do, I, I too request that, that you get, get your answers, your questions answered ahead of time, and if there's something that you think needs clarifying for the public, I'm not even sure it needs to be pulled from consent. I think that you can ask the superintendent to address your, address the item without pulling it. Because you pull it, we have to vote on it separately, and if you just want clarification for the public, we can do that without having to do this.
I understand all of that, and I had sent an email to the superintendent that I did want to pull these consent items, but for time reasons, we could not republish a new amended agenda. So I had reached out to the superintendent to make the chair aware that I had some questions on these items. I just want to clarify that to the public.
Yeah, just after the time, that's fine. Anybody else, did you, had something else? Yeah?
I just want to make sure that I do agree with you that we should all do our due diligence. Before I meet with the superintendent, I read through everything, to the point where I have found spelling errors, punctuation errors, numerical errors, so that those things get fixed when I meet with the superintendent, so that this board isn't caught off guard when something like this happens. Because now, we are pulling out things that really are regular business items, which is why they're in consent, and it can leave the district off guard, it can leave this board off guard, when we take the time to get all of our questions answered prior to this. And I do agree with Mrs. Foreman, there have been times where, and as you've said, like, I want to make sure the public is informed, I always want that to happen. It doesn't have to happen in this manner. There are a lot of different ways we can do that. We can make sure, hey, can you make sure that you touch on these things? There's been times where I'll say, "Hey, Superintendent Saunders, can you make sure that in your closing, that you touch on these types of things so that people know these things?" Or in my board comments, I'll make sure that happens, so that people are informed. There's a lot of different avenues to make sure that that happens, rather than pulling every single item off of the consent agenda. So I just want to, since we can't talk about it any other time, other than right now, I want to make it really clear that there are a lot of different avenues, and I know this is a lot of new, but there's a lot of different avenues to achieve what I think you're trying to achieve. But I will say that our board policy says that there is no vote needed in order to remove things from the consent agenda.
I have my hand.
Yes.
So Ms. Spray, is your intention of pulling these items to just have further explanation by the staff, or do you want to have a discussion among, among us?
Discussion among us.
Okay.
For clarity, yeah. Right, and again, I had reached out to, I did have my briefing, the briefing was scheduled, the agenda was written, I had a lot of onboarding going on in meetings, and I pulled a lot of this data at home and done my research, and then spent that time in between conferences and meetings, reading the attached documents. And that's where my concerns came in, and I just wanted to, I just wanted to have that ability to ask further questions. And, and some are very brief, understand. I, it's not that I want to deliberate on all of these items, I just want clarity on some of that, and I did get a lot of information. However, I still think that there are some things in here that probably should not have been on a consent, but actually an item.
So, I know you put in, it was too late to, it was after the 12 o'clock deadline, and, and I wanted to stick to that, that's why, I knew you were going to do that, and that's fine. It happens, sometimes you go back and look at this and say, "Man, I really wish I would have said that in my meeting, and let me pull it." So you're absolutely, I'm not, I don't particularly think there's any malicious reasons to be doing this whatsoever. I would like to, let me ask legal this, can we, can I make a motion to amend some of the ones that she has written down?
What, what you have is, you've got kind of two conflicting board policies, and, and one is, has been correctly stated, that any board member has the right to pull something from the consent agenda, doesn't require a vote. But you have another policy, we have a deadline for doing that, so that it's not done at the meeting.
Right.
Which is, is it Friday?
Friday at noon.
Yeah. So, so that's why it's a little confusing. So that's why I think you're voting, because the, that policy didn't get, didn't get followed.
Correct.
But the others, just you have a motion on the floor that's been seconded, so just following normal rules of Robert's rules.
Put on that first.
You should just proceed in that manner, that you just have, you have a motion and a second.
Okay. Any more discussion on this? I don't see any speakers. So let's go ahead and vote on this. Do we have this ready for the system, Ms. Means? So all in favor of these amendments and pulling consent item number one, three, five, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, eighteen? Please cast your votes now. It looks like it was passed five to one.
Thank you for that.
Absolutely. We'll move to item agenda number seven, approval of minutes. Recommendation from the superintendent?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the minutes from board meeting and public hearing on November 8th, 2022, and board reorganization meeting November 22nd, 2022.
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion? Go ahead and cast your votes now. Passed five to one unanimously, thank you superintendent. Moving on to recognitions, item number eight, Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year, Mr. Barber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members, Superintendent Saunders. Yeah, it's quite an honor to be, have the Principal of the Year and Assistant Principal of the Year on each side of me, and so it's great to have them here. We have the pleasure of honoring Carol Ricks of Myaca City Elementary, who has been named the School District of Manatee County's Principal of the Year, and Adrian Voss of Johnson K-8 School of International Studies has been named the Assistant Principal of the Year. Both Ms. Ricks and Ms. Voss are now eligible for the Florida Department of Education's Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year Awards, so we're pulling hard for them on both counts. Carol Ricks has been the principal at Myaca City Elementary since 2019, and she has been with the school district since 2008. She has been described as a principal who creates a positive learning environment that unites students, teachers, and support staff, and parents in a professional yet warm way. She leads her students to continually set goals to achieve educational targets in reading, math, and science, along with asking them to set personal goals related to good citizenship. On the innovation front, she has led the way as the school became one of the very first elementary schools in the state to offer an agricultural program, complete with chickens, cows, and gardens, and who knows what else? Right, right. And the school is one of five elementary schools in the county to offer a dual-language program. Most recently, she demonstrated incredible leadership, not only to her school, but to the entire surrounding area during and in the aftermath of Hurricane Ian. The work of her and her staff made the school a safe place and a sanctuary for the Myaca community during those difficult times. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you the district's Principal of the Year, Carol Ricks.
Thank you all so much for, I am still humbled and honored to even be representing the school district of Manatee County, especially with so many wonderful leaders, but I am proud to represent us as we move into the state, and I am very honored and appreciate this recognition.
Adrian Voss has been an assistant principal at Johnson K-8 since 2020, and she has been with the school district since 2010. Johnson K-8 Principal Tony Lasada, who's hiding right over there, says Ms. Voss goes above and beyond when it comes to curriculum and instruction. She meets with teams every week and discusses the standards taught the week before and what is on the curriculum map for the current week. She looks at student work and compares it to what mastery should look like. She holds teachers, students, and parents accountable when it comes to student achievement and success in the classroom. Since being at Johnson K-8, she has initiated a parent university, where parents come in and learn how to help their children at home when it comes to vocabulary, reading comprehension, and fluency. Although she is primarily the elementary AP, she has no problem crossing over to assist at the middle school side when necessary. As Mr. Lasada says, "Our school grade would not be where it is today if we did not have Ms. Voss." By the way, their school grade is an A. It's a pleasure to introduce you to the Assistant Principal of the Year, Adrian Voss.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank the board and district leadership for this honor. My gratitude is immeasurable, and as Mr. Lasada warmly wrote those words, I would not be here without his leadership, the staff and faculty at Johnson, and my family supporting me along the way. Thank you.
Before, before you go, real quick, to both Mr. Lasada and Ms. Voss, this past weekend, two different occasions, two different places, had people tell me how much they enjoyed Johnson. So I just want to let you know that, I mean, sometimes you don't hear that very often, and, and, but they're, and these were both parents of current students, so thank you for what you're doing there. Appreciate it.
Good job.
I've told them they can go ahead and leave as soon as.
Get back to work.
We're introducing a, a new recognition this morning, it's called a Good News Moment, and the reason we're doing it is because, one, with the, you know, meetings starting at 10:00 AM, the, the first of the month meetings, that really makes it difficult to bring students down here and to get teachers and stuff. So we thought this would be a good way of showing what's going on in our schools and our classrooms, in a way that also promotes our Good News page, which is the home of good news about our students, employees, and schools. And so we want to really make sure that people are aware of that, and they're going there to check it out. It's very easy to find, if you just go to our homepage right there, you look at the top, you just click on Good News, and it'll take you to our Good News page. Now, if you, you see on the right-hand side, it has our Twitter feed, so it shows what's going on, like last night, we were at a holiday concert at Prine Elementary, where Prine was presented with a $10,000 check from Spectrum and Access TV. But you scroll down, you see the volume of stories that are produced by Manatee Schools Television and by our communication specialist, Melissa Parker. They do an excellent job of telling good news about our district. So we wanted to provide you with an example today. Our Good News Moment today has to do with the Guy Harvey Academy dedication, so we'll show that video, produced by MSTV, right now.
Three, two, one.
Today, we formalized the first Guy Harvey Academy of Arts and Science at Anna Maria Elementary School, and actually, in the entire world. So it was very exciting, even though we started this relationship back in June, today was the official dedication ceremony and ribbon cutting, and it was an absolute honor and pleasure to have Dr. Harvey take time out of his busy schedule to come here for the dedication ceremony and spend time with us here at the school.
I want to thank each of you for coming, so honored that Dr. Harvey could take time to visit us. You know, he doesn't live here, although he's thinking it's pretty amazing. He does live in the Cayman Islands, so for him to come and give of his time really does say a lot of his dedication to this project, and what better place to put it than at Anna Maria Elementary School?
The Guy Harvey Foundation was always formed to conduct meaningful research work on a number of different fishes in many different countries in the world, and have an educational component to that. This is the first school that's really adopted us, and it's become, it will be a template for many other schools, not only in, in this county, but in, in other counties throughout Florida.
We've been working with them on creating some original content and using some of their current content to teach our kids math and science through the lens of art.
The visual impact of this is astounding. You know, if I'm impressed, what do you think the kids feel like? I mean, this is like, wow, this is awesome.
Our school is located in an idyllic area, you know, we're right on Tampa Bay, and we have the Gulf of Mexico across the street, so it's a very unique campus in that regard. But the curriculum that we're providing to these kids, you know, that could be duplicated at any school.
This program will benefit not only the students here, but the students within our county. We will open this up for in the summer school camps, so that all of our elementary students are able to come and experience just the beginnings of what we're having here.
I like you, Chair, and Ally.
I was really impressed here with the amount of effort that the, the school kids have put into different projects, three in particular that we were shown today. The whale shark one, of course, very imaginative, unique, tells a lot about the natural history of the animal.
Do these guys have teeth?
Yes, they have teeth.
Okay, good answer, yeah.
The one on the trash is, of course, top of mind for a lot of people who use the beach or water goes.
Is there a lot of trash on the beach?
Um, yeah, we do find a lot of like bottle claps, cigarette bugs, and a lot of different times, types of trash.
The one that really caught my eye was the mangrove project, because mangroves are really fundamental in terms of all that they provide, and I think that story was very well-told.
There are three different types of mangroves, the white mango, the red mango, and the black mangoes in Florida.
I want to commend the, the principal, all the teachers here, everybody involved. The value of this is going to be a generational, have a generational impact.
All the, you know, really, reward goes to the superintendent, to the Harvey Foundation, and MSTV for producing that video. So anyway, thank you for letting us share that with you today.
Thank you, Ms. Barber. All right, move to item number nine, general public comments. We're going to have 30 minutes, up to 30 minutes, if need be, for general public comments. We have one person signed up for general public comment, that is George McDermott. Come on down.
My name is George McDermott, I'm a resident of Manatee County in the Brayden River-Casmond area. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Manatee County Democratic Party. At the November 22nd school board meeting, a member of this board made a request, and in all. in all seriousness, we hope, for a work session on the Florida in the government, Florida government in sunshine law. The Manatee County Democratic Party agrees with this proposal. A public workshop on state laws, good governance policies, and ethics would be an excellent start for this new board and very informative for the public. The local Democratic Party believes it's important to point out that the sunshine law does not prevent board members from talking with each other, as claimed by the board member. The law applies only when two or more school board members discuss an item that could result in some foreseeable action. The sunshine law is not a violation of any person's freedom of speech. The sunshine law safeguards our right of access to governmental proceedings. The law protects the absolute need of citizens and taxpayers of Manatee County to know what is being done in their names, with their tax dollars, and with their children. The Manatee County Democratic Party further believes that the sunshine law is crucial to preserving openness in governmental policies, governmental bodies, and preventing the kind of off-the-record cloakroom deals that subvert the values of common citizens. Hidden conversations by board members are designed to do only one thing, promote the private agendas of power blocks and special interests. The cornerstone of democracy is not just voting, it is informed voting. Florida's sunshine law protects the right of parents and other community members to know what school board members are advocating and proposing. The Manatee County Democratic Party unconditionally supports Florida's sunshine law and opposes any steps that can make it harder for community members to know what board members are planning until it's too late to exercise our rights as citizens and voters. We look forward to learning when a work session on the sunshine law and good governance will be held, and will be happy to promote such a meeting to the community at large. It will be a useful and educational opportunity for both this board and for voters. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all for general public comment. Move to item number 10, reports and presentations. First legislative update, Mr. Chapman, come on down.
Morning, Board.
Morning.
Good morning. So this is the time of the year when we, well, really, as you, as the school board, work on, we'll hear an update from our team in Tallahassee, but then discuss what your legislative priorities should be as a school board, so that our team works on those priorities during this legislative session. Those priorities are also used by our friends at the Manatee Chamber of Commerce, who, by the way, won chamber of the year again in the state of Florida. And you all will have an opportunity to travel with the chamber early next year up to Tallahassee to work the halls of the legislature on these priorities. So joining me on the screen right now, live from Tallahassee, while there's a legislative session currently actually going on, is our two friends, Sean Foster and Andrew Collel, who, there's probably not a week that I don't touch base with them, or they don't touch base with me, about what's going on. Sean and his team have been working with us for many years and have been quite successful. They were able to garner several appropriations requests. Two in particular was our, for our WASD program with Steve Wasniak, and that, over a million dollars worth of state funding for that program. And then also, just recently, securing almost $6 million in state funding for our airplane maintenance program that we're building, potentially building or on its way to building at SRQ Airport, along with the Manatee Technical College. So right there, almost $7 million of state funding has come our way just in the last two or three years to Manatee County through the, through the work of Sean and his team. So very accomplished team, and we're proud to have them. And so Andrew and Sean, I'm going to throw it to you guys to kind of introduce yourselves and give us a little update about perhaps what's going on right now in the legislature in Tallahassee, and then what you see as some of the priorities of this new Florida legislature when they come into session again early next year. So Sean, I'll throw it to you.
Thank you, Kevin. Hey, good morning, everybody. Hope you guys are having a great day. And like Kevin said, it has been an honor representing the Manatee County School Board and School District for the past couple of years, and we've had some great successes, and we've had some great challenges that have come through the legislature. And we have, first of all, want to thank you all for your support in the past. Chad and Mary, you guys came to Tallahassee last session, kind of, kind of saw what it was about, and we appreciated your support and time for, we needed some phone calls, even some text messages to our, to our leadership, and that's what it's about. It's a, it's a relationship that we all do, and we work together, and we're looking forward to another year. So going to that, I want to introduce our team. We've got three of the folks here today, Sean Foster, I've got Andrew Collel, and then on the Zoom meeting also, Ed Beamer, who joined our team recently. She is our project and client coordinator, so she's kind of, kind of be working with us and helping to work with the school district also throughout session. And so I just wanted to kind of give you some, some quick updates, and I like to start with the good news. And I'll start with the economy. The revenue estimating conference meets quarterly here in Tallahassee. They help us kind of decide what his expectations are moving forward, so you can plan a budget. Obviously, that's pretty important to all of us around the state, but they also give you an idea on what collections of taxes were month to month. Another good report that we just got in October was we received $141 million more than they had projected for this month, and that projection started back in February before the budget. So it just gives you an idea, $141 million. It's actually one of the lower months that we've had for the past 12 months, but it's, did show some negative news. So the positive news out of it came out of the sales tax revenue. The negative news kind of shows where the inflation is starting to hit the American citizens when it's concerning the interest rates. Interest rates, as you all are aware, are high, and so the decrease actually came in the document sales tax, I'm sorry, document tax received from the sales of homes. October was the slowest month they have seen in years in home sales around the state of Florida, and so that was reflected in that sales tax. But even with that $27 million reduction in expectation for that funds, we did have $141 million. So it just kind of gives you an idea. We are here today, this is the week of a special session. As you have heard and probably are familiar with, it's about three main issues, home insurance reform, sorry, pretty much it's about the communities impacted by hurricanes. There's going to be a fund, I believe the governor just put out a press release today, in fact, late yesterday, about $60 million that was going to be assisting homeowners impacted by the recent hurricanes. There's also an item on there to give them relief on tolls for people who use an excessive amount of tolls, but the real plan is getting the homeowner's insurance market in line and citizens. Citizens, of course, is the insurer of last resort, but we wanted to give you a little bit of information about that. We also like to give you some items, and I'll take some questions from you. Three items, kind of give you an idea of what the governor's proposals could be, and also leadership. Leadership has changed. It changes every two years, kind of like we do, we have elections. We have a new senate president, her name is Kathleen Passidomo, and we have a new speaker, Speaker Paul Renner. They both come in with different agendas than what was around last year with the leadership. And one of the items that I wanted to kind of tell you about, you may have heard about, it says ESG. I had to write it down again. It was $2 billion that they just pulled out of our investments. And ESG stands for environmental, social, and governance. It's a way that investment banks are figuring on how they do their investments and what investments they put it in, and in the CFO's opinion and in the governor's opinion, it's not putting those who put their dollars before them in the best interest. They put, pulled $2 billion out of that, and they're going to be putting that into another funding. That was just in the news, and so that's going to go forward. They are going to be very, very firm on that policy in the legislature and with the governor's office. Concerning education overall, our, both of our speakers spoke on the first day of session. I'm sorry, the first day when they were brought in, they were sworn in. Both of them mentioned parental rights in K through 12. They emphasized to see that there was going to be policy abound to help the next generation with some conservative policy. So they didn't give anything in absolute specifics, but I would, you know, just understand to them, they want to see parental rights, parental choice continue to be a goal of the legislature, which it has been the past couple of years. And lastly, I'll just say, this special session, it will be over here by Wednesday or Thursday. The governor has proposed a possible two or three more special sessions. He hasn't exactly said what those issues will be. We do know that higher education will be an issue that he is targeting currently, but there, we have not seen the plans. We do have one bill that was filed, we will mention it. It's not going to be something you'll probably hear a whole lot about, it is filed by Democrat here, but do you want to mention that bill real quick?
It's just a bill that requires some additional information to be placed on an IEP for each student that just tells them about their rights once they come of legal age.
And that, that's the only bill we have.
That's it, so far.
We do represent you with the Florida School Board Association and their meetings up here. There's a group called FEL, Florida Educational Legislative Liaisons. It's a group of internal and external lobbyists that meet weekly, so we represent you and your board before them, and so we'll be bringing our agenda and our items before them in our legislature, and we had the opportunity to meet with some folks this week, and we'll continue to do so. So Kevin, if there's an opportunity, I'll take any questions or any input that the board has for us also.
Yeah, thank you, Sean, and team. If it's okay with the chair, in front of you is a draft document. I think it's in front of you. If not, we'll pass it out. Okay, we're going to get that, we're going to get that to you. This is, it's very familiar. This is what we work on every year, the list of priorities, and what you'll see on there in a minute is, and again, this is draft, this is a working document for you all to work on. The first two items are something that's been on there for a few years in a row, and then that last item, Madam Superintendent, if you wanted to speak to that, we just saw a video on it, but if you wanted to talk about maybe our appropriation requests that we'd like to recommend to the school board that we have our team work on.
Yes, I've been very fortunate as superintendent. Each year, we've identified a special project, and we've been very blessed to receive appropriations for that, that special project. The only year we did not was the year of COVID, when the budgets were kind of halted and so forth. The first one was the airport, not the airport, but the driving range, shooting range combination that we're doing in partnership with the Bradenton Police Department. The WASD initiative that was spoken of, and then, of course, our latest, our latest one was the partnership with SRQ. The combination that you'll see what's in common with all these projects are workforce. All of these are partnerships with community organizations that will instill workforce opportunities for the future, hopefully in this community. So of course, the latest partnership that we have engaged upon is our Guy Harvey partnership. We are going, hopefully, to request a $2 million appropriation for that project. What you've seen at the school, we've already got in place, but we're hoping to expand that with outdoor aquariums, with a dock, and other marine exploration that we're able to do. And the partnerships that we have not only will be with Guy Harvey, but it also will have local partnerships. And Child's Organization, we will be working directly with him, Bell's Department Store. So this will be a partnership not only with an international business agency, but also our local business agencies to hopefully instill more marine science, art exploration, and other career opportunities for our students. So that is one that we would like our lobbyists to work on. We do feel Guy Harvey and his team have already met with the governor, so we do feel with their combination, as well as our board and support in our community, that would be an appropriation that I do think that we will see support and traction on. So that's one. I know the other two listed that we've already spoken about, and we've talked about in here, our focus, of course, is third grade literacy, reading on grade level. We know that pre-K is a game changer. Pre-K is not under our K-12 umbrella. We are asking that the state move that money from the Early Learning Coalition under our domain to where we can support and control and mandate all students attend pre-K. And many parents would love for their children to go to pre-K. They can't afford it, or they may not have a facility that's conducive for them. So with putting that under K-12, it's going to give students an additional year that are maybe coming in with some lagging skills to get prepared for that third grade assessment. And of course, we're always concerned about the FFP funding model, so, but those are just our, from our district lens. We certainly, this is the opportunity for the board. If they have any particular items that they want to list on here, that's what this session is about.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Sean, if you have just a quick second, can you just weigh in on maybe some of those preliminary talks you've had with our delegation about Guy Harvey and the excitement that you heard from, from our, some of our members of our delegation?
I'd be happy to. And first, I want to just thank you, Kevin, and the superintendent. Like I said, this is something we've been talking about for about six or seven months, and I know you guys have been planning even longer, so I appreciate one to kind of bring me in in the beginning of this, so I could start having some conversations. And the feedback I got was, they already knew about the program before I even picked up the phone and spoke to some of them, Senator Boyd and a few others. They were really excited, and they wanted to know informate, more information about it, and wanted to support it. So as you both know, we have to get sponsors in the House and the Senate for the appropriations. We'll be working on that with you, but I do not think that'll be a problem. But I will just tell you, the, kind of, the information that you've put out there to the public has been well received, and they've gotten great feedback on it already also.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Sean. Oh, Mr. Chair, this is kind of the time where perhaps if some board members want to offer some of their priorities.
I don't have any, I don't have any clicks on the speaker.
I'm sorry. I guess I need to.
Miss Messinger.
I hit that real quick. I, I'm, I have one question. I was trying to find the language that the consortium used, but I guess my main question is about the BSA, and what are the expectations of the BSA since you kind of mentioned inflation, but you know, we, as a board, we are handling that, we are dealing with that as well when we're purchasing things. So I guess I was kind of curious about what would be the expectations with the BSA. I know that when I went to FSBA, they, and they had talked about how, you know, there's some leadership that's really going to focus a lot on mental health, and so I, I had that expectation, but I guess I'm more curious about just the BSA in general, and what will we see happen, or what do you think will happen? And should that be something in our legislative platform?
A great question. Of course, the BSA goes along with a very long FFP that's in there that, that takes like a master's degree itself just to understand. What they wait on that, and it's kind of giving us is, is a little bit more time, and I'll tell you why, is before they start giving specifics and appropriations on what they will allot during the budget, they wait until the last revenue estimating conference meets, and so the education items are the biggest, biggest items in healthcare. So I would tell you, one, I would carefully watch my comments, but I would expect an increase, because I think the, the revenue will be there to be able to do it in the budget moving forward, because even think, think about this, even though we've had the hurricanes, we rebound very, very quickly from any fears of hurricanes and people coming to the state of Florida and spending their money here. Obviously, our state is, is based on tourism. and spending their money here. Obviously, our state is based on tourism. So the more dollars coming in, the more that's available for the, for the budget next year. So with that said, I've not heard of any decrease. I have heard encouraging comments from the governor's office that they would like to see increases. I just haven't gotten exact amounts. And I probably wouldn't get that until probably even late February, late February.
So I did find the language. The language from the, and you probably already have it, but the language from the consortium is provide an annual increase to the BSA consumer with the rate of inflation and cost saving increases, but no less than 7% to ensure school systems can meet the rising costs in every aspect of their business. That was the consortium's language. And they also talked about the RLE and just, you know, maintaining that, but that hasn't happened. And so, okay, that was it. I was just curious about the BSA, but we don't really know. And we're not going to know.
We don't know. I, I.
There has been, there has been an increase to the BSA, I believe. There was, you know, last year they made their largest increase to the base student allocation yet. I believe there hasn't, and I've only been doing education for a few years now. There's been an increase, a small one, right? It's whether the increase is enough.
Right.
That seems to happen every year.
And after other items that they require to be funded or pulled out of it.
Right.
That's, that's a lot of the issues.
Right, exactly. You might pull out the categorical and say, oh, well, I'm not going to fund this categorical anymore. But then you really move that money to the BSA and then we still have to follow the rules to basically do what that categorical did. So it doesn't actually change what the BSA is doing. So that's.
And then last year, last year, what happened is they gave you more money and then all of your retirement rates went up, costs for employer, costs for retirement. So it's like, it wasn't quite the increase that it was, you know, ostensibly that it appeared to be. So hopefully this year there will be an increase with not a match in state costs for things like retirement and whatnot.
Right. I guess that's what I'm looking for is to make sure that we can ensure that we're providing a high quality instruction for students by being able to purchase the appropriate materials in the face of inflation, be able to continue to retain employees in that, in the face of that. So that's, that's really my goal there. So, all right.
So you'll see in a line of your connections, you know, we'll continue to educate and advocate on that issue and pretty much fight because continue to let them know that, yes, there are increases, but those increases are being absorbed by insurance, the FRS and other items. So we will definitely be talking to your delegation. We'll have an opportunity during the legislative delegation meeting in Manatee County also for you all to speak to them. But I can assure you with a one pager, you know, we'll be putting together, we'll be delivering that message. Andrew?
The governor's office makes a, a budget recommendations to the legislature every year and that comes right as session starts around that time. So, so nothing's out on paper yet. However, we did see some comments about the governor making a comment about a $5,000 bonus for teachers and a commitment that goes with that bonus. So we'll see if anything substantively comes out of that, you know, two-year teaching commitment, also a $5,000 bonus. That'll be helpful to the school districts to, you know, recruit talent.
So to do that though, then, would they look at the definition of what they consider to be a teacher and an instructor?
Well, as we've seen, sometimes there are financial incentives that go out that don't cover all of the talent pool of the school board. And sometimes just classroom teachers and we leave out some other folks. So if I see that come up and perhaps Sean and I could have a conversation with the governor's budget unit and education and, you know, share, if it's the position of the school board, share that the position of the school board is to include a more broader definition than perhaps just classroom teachers. And we'll defer to the board on, you know, that type of position.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Bre.
Okay, a couple of things. Thank you for being here, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah. On item two, you're saying that the legislator, legislature is going to include pre-kindergarten classroom teachers in the definition. So you're basically saying that the language is going to be changed for that to include, right? Okay. Yeah.
Just to clarify, we're asked, that's what we're.
That's what we're asking. Right. This is our ask to add this and to add the language to include.
I think the consortium, everybody is pretty much.
Right. Yeah, I get it. I know what you're saying, what you mean, but we're, that's our ask of legislators. Okay. And then my ask would be with that pre-K through three, is there any way we can ask for more funding to focus on those levels to go along with that? And then, I mean, that to me, K through three or pre-K through three, if we are adding that now, would be give us the money with that. That's what I'm asking. Also, you talked about a bonus of $5,000 per year. I would rather see a bonus into a permanent pay structure instead of just giving bonuses. I would ask for the money to be given to us for the teachers instead of, instead of a bonus. So I would ask for more funding for teachers' pay on a permanent level instead of just a bonus.
I didn't know. Kevin, if you want me to say something? I agree with you, Ms. Bre. I think one of their concerns are right now is just, the reason that was being mentioned is they don't know what the future's going to hold right now for whether recession or other items with inflation. So I think this was just the way that the governor felt that he could do something with it. But I'd agree with you. I think the best would get it to the, to the base. But they are very, very concerned on us seeing a turning down in the, you know, funding coming in for the state in the next three to five years. And again, we'll give you a great update at the beginning of next year because that's when the review estimating conference will give us moving forward for 12 months also.
Thank you, Sean.
Yes, sir.
Is that it?
Yep, just.
Ms. Foreman?
Yeah, I've got a couple. And see if there's board support on this. One is the, the ability of local districts to set their calendars. You know, A-rated districts have the option to, to start earlier, which I don't follow the logic of that because I would think that the districts that are struggling would be the ones to, to start earlier. But additionally, we had quite a time trying to, this last year, just because of where August 10th fell on, you know, during the, what weekday, we had a hard time getting our calendar so that we're not taking a break and then having to come back and do, and do exams for first semester and also for graduations. You know, let's face it, once Memorial Day comes, everybody checks out mentally. So, you know, we just need more flexibility in setting our calendars. Yeah.
I agree.
Agreed? Okay. All right. Good. We got one. And then the other one, and this is much far, more far reaching, are the schools that accept the vouchers, the Florida Empowerment scholarships. They are not accountable to the parents, or to, to the public in their performance. And we're finding that people who use the vouchers, send their kids there, they're back in the very high withdrawal rate. They're back in the, back in the public school system within two years. And not all schools are created equal. And I think I would love to see them at least report publicly what their, their academic performance is.
You mean for each individual student?
No, for the school, for the school. Yeah.
Private school that's accepting the voucher, et cetera?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Cho, can I enter?
Yes, ma'am.
One thing, one thing that may be helpful that you may be able to achieve from what you're looking for on the accountability side, partly by what you stated, that in some cases, once the FTE is given, you have the money and then they go back to the school system. Maybe instead of the calculation of two surveys a year, maybe they turn that into four so that at least they're not receiving a bulk of the money if the students are not staying in that institution for their education. So that may be, you know, something that you could get.
That's a different issue. That's the money issue I'm talking about.
The money and the, you know, they're not tested or reporting. There's no actually reporting that.
No, there's no reporting. And a parent making a decision to send a child, their child to one of these schools, they're not equipped with the, with the information to compare to others, other options. And, you know, if we're doing parental choice, let's make it informed choice. When I talk about the FASB, or the, not the FSB, the other conference I went to, there was, there's, there's some news on the, on the kids coming back into the system front. So.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
And Ms. Chairman?
Sure. Thanks for being here, gentlemen, on the TV, Ms. Chapman. So I need some education here, being a new school board member. So terms and terminology and explanations and acronyms. So on this sheet right here, it says, the first paragraph says, "The school board supports adding the FEFP funding," which I think I understand what that is. That's full-time funding for students. "Funding compression and hold harmless allocation. This program has seen a decrease in funding and has been considered for elimination. We support this funding and ask that it not be eliminated or funding decrease." So maybe the layman's explanation of what those terms mean, please, whoever could do that.
Do you want to answer? Do you want me to answer, Sean?
Okay, go ahead.
The whole, I believe they had already mentioned you almost have to have a master's degree in not just finance, but K-12 public finance. This is part of their formal, formula that they're using. And they try to, even though there are 67 counties, we're not all created equally. So they certainly do try to put aspects in the formula to equalize. And there is a hold harmless. We also have things called the class size amendment. There are different aspects in our formula that if you don't meet those requirements, there are punitive consequences, meaning they take your funding. So one of the things, the most recent thing that we're asking for waivers and hold harmless on are the class size amendments. That is a constitution. So it means that if you do not have one teacher per 18 students for K-3, for four through eight, 22, for high school, 25, then you're penalized for every teacher you do not have. So if I've got a teacher within kindergarten, 19 students versus 18 students, you get fined. Some of the things that we are requesting from the state is that in those places where, and maybe you have to have documentation showing that you've posted, there's no candidates, there's no qualifying candidates, can you hold harmless some of those fines that are being imposed on some districts? So with this formula, we're hoping that they don't reduce our FEFP and our base student allocation, which is what Gina was saying. They indicated that they raised our base student allocation last year, which is part of the FEFP. But if they put these other categorical mandates and they don't give you enough money to cover them, if they say you have to increase your FRS contribution, but in that formula, the amount that they gave you per student doesn't cover that differential, it comes out of your general fund. And that's really what all of our districts are dealing with. The aspect that Ms. Foreman just spoke about on, because they changed, it used to be McKay, it used to be Hope Scholarships. They've combined that into now this, she indicated voucher. They have a different name for it. But that is a pile of money coming out of the district as a path, pass-through that we don't even see. We have no way to calculate, no way to forecast. So really, this funding for, formula and holding us harmless and making sure they're not decreasing our mileage taxable amount and keeping us at a funding place that we can compensate employees and provide services is vitally important. All this is the educational jargon, but it really is making sure we're held harmless. We know we're fixing to go into possibly a recession. Be mindful of how they're going to appropriate our dollars.
Thanks for the explanation. In a conversation we had in our pre-meeting meeting, you, you mentioned this problem, that there appears to be a problem where, let's say in the district, there are 1,000 children that go to private schools and use these scholarships.
Right.
And the way, and so it's twice during the year, the state comes down and says, we have kind of calculated how many children are using these vouchers or scholarships or whatever. And so we're going to take that full-time equivalent money out of your system.
Correct.
But they're not students that were necessarily, that we'd already gotten the money for in advance. Is that, is that true?
In some cases, they give you partial funding. We get funded at our district because everyone out of 67 are funded a little different. Ours equates to about 7,700 per FTE. Are we 77, 78 right now? They pull out for these scholarships $8,300 per kid.
Right.
So if I've only been allocated, and in some students, in some cases, the students never entered our schools. So we had never accounted for them. They were never in our calculation of our system. So they do give us partial funding. It never covers the whole allocation.
But did you just say that some of the money that is pulled out of our fund, we never got it in the first place?
Correct.
So that's, that's what I guess my point I wanted to make is, is there some legislative little tweak that we need to make such that the way that this is done, I mean, you should, you know, if a child leaves during the year or was in our system last year and now we don't have them this year, I understand pulling partial funding or full funding. But what I hear, what you told me at least, is that they're coming down and taking money out of our general fund for students that were, we never ever got the FTE for in the first place.
They had never been in our system, nor had we had any way to account for them to have ever received funding until they ask for us to send them payment. One, so one request that's going along with this conversation could be, Sean, that for all of those situations, the district is not used as the pass-through. Is there a way that they can just fund those scholarships completely separate where we're not accounting for that money? Or because that's what everybody's dealing with. They're taking more than we could ever account for or ever had walking in our door. Plus, they're pulling out more than what we receive for FTE, for those vouchers. So if they just, if the parent applied for the scholarship to the state, which is what they do, because it doesn't go through us anyway, and they approve it, they have a pot of money that they fund and it's not going through us because they're not, and if they find that they were in our system, then they move the FTE from us to them. But if, in, in some cases, they were never even in our school system. So that is really what the difficulty is on, and this has only been in place for a couple of years in this funding formula. But it's very difficult to manage and to account and to forecast or budget when you've never seen them in your system to begin with.
Okay. That's, that was helpful. So if we could tweak that, I don't know, other people write laws. But that seems like the big picture is it's unfair that we're taking out of money, they're taking scholarship money out of our general fund for students that we never got money for in the first place.
Yeah.
And somehow legislative.
But you really can't budget, you can't forecast, they were never here. But they moved to Manatee today and get a scholarship. So we have to pay for it, but they've never, they've never been in a, you, you guys, you've heard this, right, from others, I'm sure?
Could we, I mean, we may also look at maybe legislative language, not instead of back going through DOE, but saying that they need to be in the district for a minimum time before that funding is pulled out from yours?
It used to be that way. Oh, my, scholarships. It used to, it, it used to be that way.
Until it changed.
Until it changed two years ago. And at least with that, you could account for, you could at least account, plan, budget. So I think, you know, we don't know what the best solution of it. But I know it's, it's really a difficulty for most districts to plan and budget when you have no way to forecast that situation at all.
Well, I think one thing we do is at least start, start the. Well, I think, one thing we do is at least start, start the conversation.
Right.
Right.
So, a second issue that I'd like to ask about is the number two on the paper, and it says, "The school board requests the legislature include pre-kindergarten classroom teachers to the definition of K-12 classroom teachers." So, what are the kind of the second and third order effects of that? Does that now mean that they're considered to be qualified teachers, they would come under collective bargaining? Do we, do we currently pay pre-K teachers at a different rate? I'm trying to look at the fine, I mean, it sounds like a great idea, sure, let's make more teachers, get them in the contract, but what are the second, third order effects, especially funding?
There are many. In some case, and back to where, when we were talking about the $5,000 bonus, right, for all teachers. Right now, the state does not recognize pre-K teachers in the definition of teachers, because we're K-12. So, you do have some full-time certified instructional classrooms, that are under an ESE pre-K and Title I cadre, where they're certified, they attend all day, get paid. We treat them in our bargaining unit, in our board, in the same definition, but the state of Florida does not. We also have through the Early Learning Coalition, so if I have some non-Titel I schools, and they're not an ESE pre-K classroom, they're a VPK classroom. They are not under our umbrella, they do not require the same certification, those are half-day programs, and their salary is not set by the board or us, it's set by the Early Learning Coalition. So, this ask is to say, move them all under the same rules and regulations as the other K-12 teachers, which, yes, it would fall under the MEA collective bargaining and so forth. Again, if they're full-time teachers for us, we include them in our union, but if you're a VPK teacher, it's not part of that, and their pay is different, because it's under a different umbrella.
VPK stands for?
Volunteer Pre-Kindergarten.
Volunteer.
They queue miss, absolutely, because pre-K is not mandated, even if you're going to us, mandatory school begins in kindergarten per the state.
Did I hear you mention, you thought it would be a good idea to mandatory pre-K? Was that part of your comments?
If we really want to move the needle on third grade literacy, absolutely, because there are many students, that if they could come in to formalized education a year early, before kindergarten, it's going to help improve the needle by third grade. Many parents, because it's voluntary, and because they have to pay, if you're not in a school system, they can't afford it, or many of them are half-day programs, and they can't work within their, their work schedule for a half of a day program. So, it would help parents to have a formalized, you know, educational opportunity that they would not have to pay for, because it would be under our domain and our umbrella.
Because, I'm a little hesitant to make it mandatory more, just because.
They could choose to make it, yeah, I mean.
Have it available if, if somebody wanted it.
An option.
An option, but, you know, how low do we go? One and a half, put your kid in school, you know, at some point?
Because these, these would be four-year-olds.
Yeah, okay. And then, just a general comment about removing as many restrictions as we can on local, on local control of money, in previous conversations that I had before I was elected, because of the sunshine laws, I mentioned that, it was just mentioned to me with other board members, that, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of control from Tallahassee about how we can spend our money. For instance, at the end of fiscal years, there's money left in Account A, and we don't need it in Account A, because we'd really need it over in Account B, but because of the rules that the legislature has put on the money in Account A, now we can't use that money. And it really drives up our budget costs, because it's like, it would be like me having, you know, four savings accounts in my personal budget, and I, one's for a car, one's for a house, and one's for house maintenance, and the car's running well, but there's a big hole in the roof, and I can't move money from my car maintenance account to my house maintenance account, it just has to sit there, well, that just makes my budget all
You are correct.
whacked, you know. So, anything that we could do to, you know, remove some of those restrictions would be, would be helpful, especially, you know, in a government environment that is generally, right now, at least controlled by people who believe that smaller government local control is better, it would be nice to see those principles actually put into practice and let school boards operate in that kind of manner, so. And I think that is all the questions that I had, thank you for your time.
I just wanted to piggyback, Kenny?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna jump in real quick.
Go ahead.
Sean, Andrew, good to see you guys. Just to what Mr. Tatum said, yeah, if you could eliminate all of those, that'd be fantastic, and give all local control.
Yes.
Right? Oh, what, give me a small victory, yeah, give me half of one. So, one thing that I just wanted to mention, you know, the consortiums we're part of do a great job of, of encompassing a lot of the things that we want to have on the legislative agenda. But one thing that we were big on, especially last session, I'm assuming, and I think someone brought it up earlier, with mental health. My concern with, I'm not concerned, I agree with having mental health and helping in the school districts, but my concern is, who does it fall back on? And if there's no funding for the mental health, and to bring in professionals to do some of the things that they're asking us to do in the school system, who does it fall back on? It falls back on the teacher. And so then we're asking the teacher to teach, someone be a quasi-parent to these students, and now they gotta be a psychologist. And so, how much is enough, right? So, how much are we gonna ask a teacher to do, and then say, wait a minute, you didn't do those seven things that aren't even on your job description, well enough? So, my concern is, is, is there ideas, or is there, they're potentially out there bills that could possibly put up to say, look, if we're gonna require school districts to do XYZ for mental health, we've got a, and I'm not saying it has to come from the FET or anything like that, it may come from a whole nother source, but not say, hey, school district, your teachers have to do this, we're gonna provide some kind of revenue, if you can go pay someone who specifically is, that's their job description, to come in and do that. Are there thoughts of anything, like, I would like to see funding for that specific, if they're gonna be asking us to do it as a school district, I'd like to see funding behind that.
So, I mean, as you're aware, Mr. Choate, you know, the governor's wife has made it definitely an emphasis on, on mental health funding, not just for nonprofits, but see more directed. I can't really, don't, we haven't seen legislation yet that would put it directly in, in the, the format that you're talking about. But you're right, I think we, we put enough on teachers already, so it will be an issue coming up in the session, that's coming from the governor's office, and some from, this House Speaker has mentioned the mental health issues. So, as the bills start getting filed, we'll start giving you kind of more updates, and of course, with that, we would hope for some funding and support.
Thanks, and then, oh, go ahead.
I think one way you could do goes back to what Mr. Choate's saying, and also what Mr. Tatum stated. I think we all recognize, we support and need the mental health allocation and, and funding. The problem is, if you put it in a categorical pot, with very specific, specific guides as to how you can spend it, you have to contract, for the most part, with outside agencies. You can't use that pot to give compensation to the teachers that are having to also help deliver those services. So, maybe, obviously, they're gonna pass something. What I believe both gentlemen were referring to is, make sure that there's flexibility, that, that delivery of service, if the teachers are also having to do it, they could, we can use that pot of money as well, to help support and, and pay them for some of those services. Because you put a lot on their plate, and you're saying you've gotta do this, 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 right? Okay. But those are additional things to teaching reading and math and social studies and so forth. So, if you've got this earmarked mental health bucket, you, you can't use that to support the teachers of delivering the service.
And, and this last thing I want to say too, about the vouchers, is if, I think communication, and we talked about this at our consortium, we were down in Fort Lauderdale, communication's the key. Like, if, if they feel, if, if a child is not coming to our school and is applied for the voucher, the state never tells us until it's time to ask for the money. And so, just little tweaks, I think, in that particular item, would, would help the, the district immensely. I mean, we, you don't know until, here's the bill, and give us the money, there's never any, hey, in September, you had two kids apply for these, these vouchers, and get them, they will be leaving your school and going to XYZ, we're not, there's no information.
This is the, the most basic level of an idea for that, but would it be possible for staff to have an ongoing public records request with DOE, for DOE to just consistently send the district a list of all approvals for these vouchers as they come out? So, if they approve vouchers once a week, once a month, versus you having to ask, like, could we get DOE to just send that information to y'all? I know that might be more of a loose way to kind of gauge your students who won't be there, but you at least get a list, and hey, Bradenton had 40 kids apply, 25 were approved, and you kind of know, oh, well, they won't be in our system. I know that's not really the most solid fix, but that might be something.
Actually, I actually want to think, I want to see someone at the consortium said that. I, I want, I want to vaguely remember that somebody said, asking, you know, just have a, a, a public request, but to me, that shouldn't be our responsibility to do that. But I do agree, Andrew, that may be just some, it, it could be potentially an easier fix, rather than pushing language in for a bill that changes something.
And the voucher couldn't exceed what the district.
Would get anyway.
Gets for FTE purposes.
Right.
I, I mean, when, the, the vouchers, 82, 8300, and we receive 77, there's a differential per child that comes out of our general budget as well, so.
We had one more from Ms. Spring.
Just a few follow-ups on all of that. When you was talking about the formula, that's only for the teacher, there's no teacher aid in that. For K through 3, you have a limited amount of funding for that for 18 students, but it does not include if you have a teacher's aid in there as well, am I correct?
That is correct. Our, our formula is our own internal district.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to be, and I agree with you on the funding, I mean, if we're, they're giving, we're giving 7,700 or whatever number you stated, and then they're taking more than they gave us, that's, that's not good, that's like.
Enough students that have never walked in our.
Exactly, so I agree also with, why are we doing the pass-through thing with that? Mental health, and I'll be real quick, teachers have so much on their plate anyway, and mental health is a part of a teacher's role, I understand that, a whole lot more than most really understand. But anything that we can do to let them focus more on the fundamentals of educating kids would be my, my preference, and let the mental health experts take care of some of those. We've got some challenging kids out there, we know that. So, I would be more for the funding for a program, instead of putting that on a teacher's daily activity, so, that's all I have, thank you.
We don't have any, any, anything else. I do want to ask, to you, Ms. Chapman, is this, when, when is the next, and maybe you haven't scheduled anything with Sean yet, when's the next time that they come in? I want to say last year, we maybe did a workshop to finalize everything, when's the next time, do we have that down or no?
We don't.
I may be jumping ahead.
We don't, because the guys are stuck in Tallahassee.
Okay.
And then we've got the holidays. But Sean, knowing you're a Newport Ritchie guy, when, when will you be back from Tallahassee in that January, February timeframe? And you and I could talk offline and figure it out. And when does maybe the session start to ramp up, and people start to get back to their apartments in Tallahassee to start the session?
Absolutely, I just wanted to say one issue before I jump into that, just, so the issues that you're mentioning are being discussed statewide, the held, the held harmless, the flexibility and the funding, and the multiple issues, the categoricals, that is going to be a discussion in the session. So, I just wanted to leave that with you, that it's not just happening here in Manatee, it's happening, you know, all over the state, so you'll see that conversation with the legislators. So, we are here for two weeks during January, I, but, I preface that, the governor did tell us last week to expect two to three more special sessions before session, so the only times he could do that is either at the same time session is, or another week. So, as you, I just told you, we had two weeks available, I would expect a special session in there that he discussed, and then we're here for three weeks in February. But we can find a date, what I would say, while, what I like to do is really probably more in February, have even, I, I'd rather not do Zoom, but I'd like to do it in person and give you more information. By that time, we're gonna have more, the bills are gonna be filed, more, we'll have some more discussions about other deadlines, where the appropriations is going through the process, so. But, school board members, I know some of you are new, we, like you said, communicate with Kevin, pretty much on a weekly basis with your administration, we also give you legislative updates during session, so you'll be getting legislative updates from us during committee weeks and during session, primarily on a weekly basis, and we try to make it something readable within five minutes, not 118 bills, but something that you can read and really see what's going on in Tallahassee.
Thanks, Sean. What, what I'll do is take all of what you said and add it to this draft document, get it around to you all, so that we can get a document down virtually, before, maybe before the holidays, that you all feel comfortable with the language, because the chamber does like to solidify their countywide transportation, education, business platform, for our pancakes and politics event, where we meet, where we go in front of the delegation and present this to the delegation. So, I'll work virtually with you all on that, through the board administrator, and then, I know the chamber, they like to call fly-in, but people are driving there, but the, the chamber, Manatee Chamber fly-in, where they spend a few days up there, working the halls of the legislature, I think is around that Valentine's Day week. And so, that's usually a time when you've got many of our business leaders, civic leaders, and, and obviously, many of you can do it, go up there and, and meet with our delegation, and the Senate President, and the, and the Speaker as well, to work these priorities. So, so that's kind of a timeline, so maybe, Mr. Chair, we'll find some time before that to get back together, and hear about the next update, we'll have this forum finalized, and we can have our game plan ready for when the legislature comes back in, and, and we'll be ready to go.
I know our, our event, our time to go up there, excuse me, in the legislature, is March 15th to the 17th.
There you go, good.
So, we're a little bit later, usually we are a little bit later than, than the chamber.
And, and you're more than welcome to go, obviously, with the chamber as well, they, they like that as well, but that means probably Valentine's Day in Tallahassee, which, maybe an issue with some.
Mr. Foster, anything from you all?
No, appreciate the opportunity, and we look forward to seeing you guys soon.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman, anything from you? We're good? All right. I know we're past hour and a half, that we typically have taken recess, does anyone need to take a recess on the board? Would like to do a five-minute recess? Okay. We recess five minutes. We recess five minutes. All righty, we'll call this meeting back into session. We will move on with our reports and presentations. Palmetto High School construction update, Mr. Joe Rinaldi.
Good morning, board members. Joe Rinaldi, Chief Operating Officer. On your agenda, new business item number two is the approval of the guaranteed maximum price, or the GMP, for the Palmetto High School project. We've been working on this project since April of twenty-one. In probably mid-October, we wrapped up design. And at that point, about a month and a half, well, prior to that, the contractor was recruiting trade subcontractors to bid on this. So we got, you know, some excitement in the community that it was coming out in the construction community. Over the last month and a half, two months, they've been putting it out to bid, and we're at the point right now that we're ready to present to you the guaranteed maximum price. And then, that's the point where we start construction. So by the, with the leadership of Mr. Bill Horton, we've been overseeing this. He's been working closely with the school community, with the community in general as well, doing presentations and just keeping them apprised of the progress that we've made. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Reggie Goff, who is the project director, so he can identify or introduce the actual presenters today. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Reginald Goff. I am the project director for the Palmetto High School addition that we're proposing to build. And I'd like to introduce to you our design team at this time. Will Mr. Ken Dean with Shickland Schultz Architects please come forth? And Mr. Tom Peacock with the Gilbane Building Company come forth. Ken is going to explain the scope of work for us, and Tom is going to discuss the schedule and the costs associated with it and the milestones that are associated with this project. And with this time, I turn it over to these capable gentlemen and let them explain what we're doing thus far.
I'd also like to introduce Roberto Gonzalez. He's my project architect, and he's done a lot of the computer work, because I have a Fisher-Price computer that does do all this stuff. But anyway, and then we have Tom Peacock. So what, pleasure to the board, chairman, superintendent. As Joe was talking about, it has been a journey developing the plans and the design for Palmetto High School. I also want to reach out to the principal Monica and the assistant principal Daniel, who has been working with us and really gave us good insight on what we should do, how to correct some of the issues that they had on their campus, and really worked with them hand in hand on this design. Okay, this is the site plan. This is existing. So on the bottom of the page is Seventeenth Street. To the far left, the west side, is Fourteenth Avenue. And then, what you see is buildings in the orange is five, six, seven, eight, and nine. Those are the proposed buildings that we're going to systematically demolish in making way for the design. To the far left, which is the west, that's the existing baseball field, who's been around for about forty-six plus years. So that's on the west portion of the campus. Okay, this is what we're proposing, is one of the issues that we learned from Daniel and Monica is the traffic along Seventeenth Street. So what we did was we created a new bus loop on the far east portion of the campus. And you can see that, where it says retention area, and it comes in the, in co-terminal with Tenth Avenue, which is to the south. And so that is the bus loop, the new bus loop, and then it also leads back to the service yard. Now, the existing bus loop, which is on the west side of the campus off of Fourteenth, that's going to be the new parent drop-off and pickup. So we're taking that off of Seventeenth as much as we can to avoid the conflict with parents. Just off the bus loop is a proposed two-story classroom building that accommodates about thirty-four rooms that are in buildings six, seven, eight, and nine. The cafeteria building is building number five, and you can see proposed new classroom building. We're building that and still keeping the existing cafeteria, so we're not disrupting the servicing in that. So this is why we're systematically being able to move things in really a logical order. And then, when we've occupied the new cafeteria building, then we can demolish the existing cafeteria. In the middle, building number one, and you'll see a floor plan, that's the expansion, that's the new front door to the administration building, because the administration building really faces west and you don't really see the front door. And then, to the far west is the baseball field, and we're replacing several of the buildings there, that are in concrete block. We've got a new locker room and restroom. We have a concession stand. We've upgraded the public toilets, new bleachers and dugouts for that particular area. That's the appearance of the
Quick question, I'm sorry. We have a question from Mr. Tatum, did you want to ask now?
Yeah, a quick question. You mentioned parent drop-offs. And by the way, I'm not any way, shape, or form informed or knowledgeable about building construction. I assume you guys are professionals and you know what you're doing. But I do know that I do some deliveries for what's called feeding empty little tummies, so I'm at schools a lot, you know, and I'm driving through all the mazes that you have to do when you get around the schools. And there are a couple of schools where I look down, I'm like, who designed this? And that would be people like you or people like you. So I'm just wanting, as you're looking at that, maybe keep that in mind, that it's, some vehicles that are bigger, you can't even get your car around that as you go through the parent drop-off or whatever.
Interesting is, what we've taken is the existing bus loop. And buses, we have to have a hundred and twenty-foot radius. So that's going to make it a lot easier for cars and pickup trucks. So we're not doing anything to the existing bus loop. It's one of those really smart moves, and so we're accommodating, you know, this little issue with cars, and we can take care of pickup trucks, because it can take care of buses. Okay?
Thank you for letting me interject, and that's a minor point, but
That's, that's fine.
Parents will be happier when they can get their F-150 around.
Yeah, or suburban, yeah. Okay, and this is the view from the southwest to the new classroom building? This is the floor plate, floor plan, this is the first floor plan, first level of the classroom building. The main entrances are off the, from the west portion of the campus. You can see that where the covered walkways are, so all of the buildings are connected with walkways. Skills labs, classrooms, we have science rooms that we're, again, replacing since we're tearing down building nine, and we're accommodating that, these rooms within this building. This is the second level, and you can see we've got some more science rooms and then classrooms, central core, business, education, skills labs, teacher core, group toilets are in the center portion of the building.
Mr. Brady, did you have a question on something right this minute?
Right before the other slide, you're saying that the bus route for the pickup drop-off is, that's separate from parents coming, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay, yeah, all right, that was my only thing.
This is new, this is accommodating by taking the buses to the far
Right, so you're separating, okay, very good. That's all I had, thank you.
This is one of the corridors in the classroom building?
Is that going to be a rideable wall? Or is that just design?
That's a design, it depends on if we want to go that route. It's having, we didn't do that at Parrish at all, but it's certainly options. A lot of the color schemes that you see, our interior designer worked with Monica and Daniel, so these are just ours, this, we had them engaged, yeah. This is the new cafeteria building. This is a view from the northwest. We have an outdoor dining patio. This is the floor plan of the cafeteria building. This will accommodate two serving periods rather than the three, so we've really helped accommodate the group feeding. This is interiors. This is the administration addition, and so you can see that this faces Seventeenth Street. So we gave it really a point of orientation. Here's the front door. This is the floor plan. So you can see what we've done is we've added from the existing lobby, so we've really created safety, security at the front door, that visitors cannot get into the rest of the building, they're really in the lobby. The receptionists, they're protected behind a glass wall. We created a conference room, so if the staff needs to meet with someone, they'll meet in the conference room and not bring them into the rest of the administration building. So we really secured that.
Did you have to, and maybe you guys, y'all may have covered this already months ago, did you have to take away any of the, I'm assuming that's teacher parking that's to the west? So did you have to go into that at all, or were you able to not have to go into that parking lot at all?
We did not touch that.
Okay, good.
No, the only proposed area was going to be on the east side, but we left that alone. And then this is the baseball buildings, all concrete block. To the north area, that's the locker, storage, and combined dugout for the home team. Visitors are pretty close to where they're at now, near first base. And then, the aluminum bleachers. And then, right behind home plate is concession and public toilets. And then, the next slide, in fact, it was an interesting conversation we had, is to really create a nice corner for Seventeenth and Fourteenth Avenue, is really is kind of bland, and that's what it will look like from Seventeenth Street. And this is the view from the corner.
I'm going to jump in right here, because I know Mr. Horton has been called, and I know Zach's been called, and what this looks like right here, this is fantastic. I think that the biggest, to me, one of the concerns of Palmetto High School, you've got a lot of people going up and down Seventeenth, especially in the next, what, month, in the next month with the fair? And to showcase, I mean, that's the school that a lot of visitors come and see, and not only just for the fair, we use that place all the time, right? The fairgrounds. So this, to me, is great. I mean, I know you guys had a lot of input and things like that from public and, you know, the Palmetto residents and the people involved, but I think you guys, that's a home run, I think you guys did a really good job.
The next slide is for Mr. Peacock.
I've only got one paper, so you can flip.
Yeah, that, okay, talk about that.
Yeah. So basically, you know, we came into this, we started the GMP like in October, and, you know, with Hurricane Ian coming through, inflation, supply chain, you've heard all that. You know, you get a little concerned about the cost and how it's controlled. Uh, so we reached out to some Tampa subcontractors, Orlando, because a lot of even the, the local ones will go down to Fort Myers and, you know, help rebuild that. So we were real good, got some great trade involvement in it, and were, was able to meet the budget. The budget was thirty-five million, and we're, we're below that. I'd say that's a pretty good task in a time like this, because budgets are very hard to meet, because the, the inflation, you, you can't even, uh, in the supply chain, it's just ridiculous to deal with. But I'm very pleased with us putting that on the table and, and being able to do the whole project within the budget. And then the schedule, I want, I don't even have my glasses on, so I can't follow that too good, so I'm sure y'all can read it, but we'll basically be starting in January and completing and then the summer of twenty-twenty-four. We, we have scheduled dates for each particular, uh, task or, or area that Ken talked about. We do stay flexible, sometimes we'll talk to Monica, and it may be better to, to shift one, you know, in front of the others, whatever meets the school needs the best is what we'll do. So, you know, we leave that to, to, you know, the project team to decide as we go through. That's really all I got, so. Ready to get started, don't we?
Yep, you've got Mr. Tatum first.
So can you help me understand the, the maximum price? I guess my question is, you know, out in the public, we hear stories about, well, some, whether it's software or a building, the price was supposed to be thirty-five million dollars, and by the time it's all done and over with, it's fifty-two million dollars. And so, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything nefarious, I'm just trying to get smarter, and how do those type of things happen? Could that happen with this kind of construction where you have to come back to us and say, we need more money? Or is this actually the guaranteed price, and it will not, not go higher than that? No matter what happens between now and it looks like twenty-twenty-four? And again, I'm just trying to understand the process better, I'm not being accusatory that somehow your company would be trying to get more money out of the school system, I just want to understand how these things work.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with, with the proposed scope in, in place, so they, we established a guaranteed maximum price. We do have a very small, I think it's a one or two percent contingency in there for any unforeseen conditions that do arise. So the, the, really, the only time we would come back is if all of a sudden we find we've got unsuitable soil that, that wasn't fine, so the unforeseen items would be the only thing that would be a driver. I mean, at this point right now, as I say, we've been working since, you know, April of twenty-one, we feel we've got the scope, we know that they understand this campus. We don't have a lot of renovation and remodeling, it's demolition and new construction, and typically that's easier to, to control, because you don't find those unforeseen things when you move the ceiling tile up and all that. So the fact that it's new construction and the fact that we've been really working through this scope, I, I think we're, we're in pretty good shape. And now, now keep in mind, one of the things, since they're a private sector company, and there's one on the board right now, is the sales tax for all the materials is in our guaranteed maximum price. We've got a program where we'll do a direct purchase, where we will realize a pers- uh, the seven percent savings for those material items that we identify, that we'll do directly, and then we'll pull it out of the, the CM's contract. So there, there, there's even, there, there's some flexibility there with those monies coming in to help us with anything that's unforeseen.
So let, let's say that the price of drywall between now and a year from now doubles, and I assume you use a lot of drywall in these kind of, and then who, what happens? Is that, is that unfortunately your cost to absorb, because you gave us a maximum price? Or do you come back to us and say, we need five-hundred thousand dollars more for the drywall, or what happens in those types?
I'm gonna say ninety percent of the time it's covered, because the, the importance of a GMP, once we get it, we contract with our trade contractors, they lock in cost. And, and that's the importance of, of kind of getting the GMP, so we can tell our subcontractors to go purchase, right? There are certain cases that are, you, you know, like COVID, there was some instances there that, that occurred. You know, Hurricane Ian, something like that come through, you know, there, there are things like that can happen, but normality, no, it, it, it'll be locked in.
Again, the reason I'm asking is because the public, you know, when they see projects that go over budget, and we hear about, you know, the five-thousand-dollar hammers for, you know, Air Force planes or five-thousand-dollar toilets, whatever, it's good for me to understand how these things work, to say, well, this is the reason we had to increase the price because of X, or no, this was a guaranteed maximum price, and the contractor actually had to absorb these prices.
I mean, I, I've been in it probably for thirty-five years in the force majeure, which is.
Act of God, kind of.
Yeah, act of God stuff, you really haven't had to deal with much in my career. And then all of a sudden, it, it, with COVID, it kind of threw out a whole another scenario. But we, we did really good on the projects we did, that we kept going, you know, because we were allowed to. So it, it, it just kind of made us shift workers around the building, you know, and, and get out of sequence and things like that. But no, I don't see that, foresee that coming.
Okay, thank you for the information.
Yes, sir.
I got Ms. Messenger next.
Yeah, uh, well, he brought that up, so I just want to make sure that, um, there's another side to that, that's the board side of that, right? That's not necessarily them. There, in past practices, when the budget was created, the capital budget was created, there wasn't always consideration for inflation every single year. So we'd have like a placeholder, oh, this is going to cost sixteen million dollars, that number didn't change. Three years from now, that is going to cost significantly more. Our budgeting practices have been improved, so that doesn't happen anymore, but that was one of the reasons why that would happen. They would say the budget's sixteen million, but when it really came before us, it was twenty-four. Well, that's really the appropriate number, and we were just using it maybe as a placeholder, understanding that it was going to grow, but our budget wasn't really reflecting that when we were making capital improvements. Now our budget does reflect that. Also, as Mr. Rinaldi talked about with scope, that was something that has happened with buildings and also with the software you mentioned. The scope changed, while the, either the district or the board made that decision, which then increased the costs. So while there might have been an original budget, if the scope changed, we got more value, we got more of what we needed, even though it ended up costing more. So I think there's confusion, and I have explained that on multiple occasions as well to community members that express those concerns, that, you know, if you are building a new building, well, now we said, well, we want to add the cafeteria, the cafeteria was not necessarily originally planned for this, but it was a need, so that changed the, the scope, the, you know, and that does change the cost. And, um, I always liken it, um, when I explain it to the community members, I always liken it to, you know, if you're remodeling your house, and you say, I just want new cabinets, okay, those cabinets are ten thousand dollars. I go, but, but wait a minute, now I think if I get new cabinets, I need new countertops, that's another whatever, right? I'm getting more value, I'm getting more product, but it, I am now over budget, because my budget was ten thousand, and now I need to spend fifteen. But I'm getting more. So, um, making sure that, you know, our budgeting is appropriate, which I think we are now doing a far better job of that, and have been for the last few years, when it comes to capital projects and planning for inflation and, and costs like that. And, and I know that the district works with construction companies to figure out, what is that percentage? What should we expect so that our budget is built as accurately as possible? But also understanding that if the scope needs to change, sometimes it's appropriate, like this cafeteria needed some love, then this is appropriate to do that. But, so I just wanted to make sure I addressed that, because there's another part of it that's not on them at all, it's on us. And I want to make sure that, like you said, we can't talk about it any other time, I want you to be informed with that. I wanted to say that having sat through all of the, sat through the, the presentations and seeing all the ideas that came out, I'm really excited about this, as Mr. Choat said, I'm sorry, Chair Chad Choat, that's a lot of Cs.
I just.
Chairman.
Three Cs.
The chairman, um, maybe we should just call it that. The chairman has said, this is beautiful, I know, from so many community meetings, because the school was in my district. I know that this, this is big, and, and being on the fair board, this is big. So I appreciate that, I also can see that there's going to be a lot more pervious areas, which I think is really important, since we know that the flooding was a, a big issue there. So I, I'm just really excited about it finally coming to fruition. It's been a long, 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 way before April of twenty-twenty-one, long, long, long time coming. So I'm just super excited just to even have it here before us today, and I appreciate you guys, and I appreciate you and, and having a voice on here. And, you know, instead of having these hexagons, you should just put a giant tiger, so I'm just saying, that's my, that's my vote on that one. But I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Uh, Ms. Bray?
Okay, gentlemen, I'm looking at the history and the scope of this project, which you laid out in the slide, which I appreciate, and I agree with Ms. Messenger, this is going to be a great addition to that, because the first time I went out by that high school, I was like, wow, that's a Palmetto High School, I was a little disappointed. But original budget in September of twenty-one was twenty-nine thousand, and then it was revised budget on four-twelve of this year to thirty-nine million, I said thousand, but it's millions. And am I guessing that's due to inflation and, or the scope of the project changed a little bit, I'm guessing?
It, it was the, the addition of the cafeteria building, as well as our forecasting of the impact of inflation, uh, supply chain and, and all that. Because we, I mean, construction between those two periods, we're looking at twenty percent inflation when it came to, came to the construction projects as well. So that, that's why we went from the twenty-nine up to the thirty-nine.
Okay, because I was quite busy this timeline, I wasn't following this project. And then the, currently, it states that there are twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty-one students, and these renovations could accommodate more students, do you, are we projecting that at all? I'm just.
I think it's, I think it's close to about twenty-two-hundred, it, it's close, it's, it's close.
It's like twenty-two-fifty-one right now, and after all of these renovations, and we're talking about removing this, and I know these buildings are going to be bigger, and classrooms are going to be bigger, are we going to be able to accommodate more students?
No, well, r- r- really, it's, it's a replacement of like-for-like, because we're doing the demolition of all of the classroom buildings, buildings, let me get it back.
So is our, that's existing, yeah.
Yeah, that, the existing.
I just didn't know if this scope was actually going to add capacity.
So, um, six, seven, eight, and nine, really, it's, it's pretty close to a like-for-like when it comes to the number of classroom spaces now. The big thing is you're, you're really increasing the quality of the teaching environment, and we're bringing in the new technology, and those individual buildings in that format aren't as secure as a single two-story building, so there's a lot of other elements, but I don't think we added a significant number of.
More, if it was a challenge, is we're replacing rooms.
Right.
Like, so whatever, we're in those buildings, six, seven, eight, and nine, they were replicated in the new classroom building.
The programs are replicated.
Okay, and then, um, you talked about the demolishing.
Yeah.
Of these buildings, I'm guessing you have a plan for recycling, FAE furniture, if there's an opportunity to do that, to.
But, but the first step.
Or even to the public, I mean, if there's things that, that could be offered to the public, I'm sure there's some historical things maybe in those classrooms that maybe former students might say, oh, I want that, or something to that effect.
Yeah, the, the first step is our, our maintenance group, uh, we take a look at all of the HE, all of the heating, ventilation, all of that equipment, if there's any usable equipment there, then we will surplus it for future use.
Okay, and then, um, just a couple other things. How often have you gone under budget on a project historically? About everyone?
Yeah.
Honestly, yeah.
Great, okay.
I mean, be- because, I mean, it, it takes an effort to do the sales tax savings and all that, and not, not all districts do that, but, um, my, our partners work with us to, to make sure that we realize that sales tax saving. So typically, uh, you will probably see a credit change order at the end of the project.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Great, um, actually, in the consent, one of the consent items we pulled was savings from Anity High School's project, the two-hundred grand. Couple of questions that I have is, um, you're actually on the slide right now, actually, if you want to move to the next slide, once the new building is built, yeah, perfect. So my, it, obviously, we see the corridor, you know, the, the, the walkways where they're going. What's, where it's, where the actual wording says, new building zero-nine classroom, that was where those six, seven, eight, nine buildings were, is that going to be grass? Okay. My, I mean, just looking at this, um, and being a teacher and seeing, um, I don't, is there a way that, um, two, I, two, two ideas, two questions. Those walkways can go and connect all the way, like that one walkway to go straight across that grass to the next walkway, this right there below building fifteen and nineteen, is one question. Just because I know there was a certain principle at, 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 uh, Bregan River High School, as Mr. Peacock will know, some went there, and I was a teacher and coach there at the time, that there was no walking on grass, that was, you walked on concrete, no walking on the grass, et cetera. So I, so I just want to, which kept the grass really nice. So, so I just don't want to see, you know, it's raining, it's dew in the, on the, in the morning, and kids are walking across this grass, and we, could we build walkways? So that's number one, or number two, we saw this in the southeast design, that they kept that, I want to say it's a drum circle, it's a, something they've, they've done a long time, it's, it's their tradition to have this drum circle, and, and they kept it in that design. Is there something we could do there that it could be some, some benches and some places? And maybe you already have that, you just didn't necessarily draw them in there. But that, those are my two suggestions, is I can almost probably guarantee kids are just going to walk right across the grass to get the next, instead of following a ninety-degree angle, so that would be my only question, and.
I mean, and, and we'll, we'll take a look at the layout there, one of the things is we have had, because there's been discussion about solar too, and we've talked with FPL, and, and they have some small kiosks where you can charge phones, uh, the solar's doing the lighting and all that too, so, um, and.
This project here?
So we're, we're talking with them about doing that at some of the schools. We may look to do that here, depending on, you know, whether there's grant availability and what the availability is at, but we'll, we'll take a look at the circulation through the.
Obviously, I don't want to change a whole, draw, you know, your whole thing, but I'm just thinking to myself, if we can connect that, I don't know, hundred, whatever it is, you know, with, with concrete, I just, you know, that's all. But other than that, you guys, like I said, I think, I think this looks great. So, I don't have anybody else lit up to speak, so I think you all are off the hook.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation, we appreciate it, and everybody involved in the, in the building, the process, you guys have been awesome, so thank you very much. Last, uh, report and presentation we have is, I believe it's Ms. Foreman, to give us an update, report on the Florida School Finance Officers Association Conference that you attended a couple weeks ago. So floor is yours.
Thank you, and thank you to the board for, for approving for me to attend, it was actually an excellent conference. A lot of people who are working in the field were the presenters, as well as people from, uh, from the state, and just excellent. I won't bore you with, um, some of them, like, I'm sure you would, would love to hear about Gatsby and the secrets of Gatsby, but I'll, I'll pass on that, so. Uh, I just want to hit the highlights of some of the things that it came from, came from it. There was a session on the annual comprehensive financial report, known as ACFOR, and they were talking about the certificate of achievement, you know, you recall that we get that every year. And they talked about the program, and only twenty-one Florida districts, school districts participate. And one of the things that they mentioned is that they send a detailed list of comments and suggestions for improvements, which I'm sure the audit committee would love to see, you know, so I would ask that, that the audit committee start, start receiving that. And then we had a lengthy, or a session on the family empowerment scholarships, and someone from the state. And someone from the state was the presenter. A lot of the things that we talked about, were definitely talked about in there. One of the things that I made note of is that the prior year, you know, the, the scholarship was prepaid, and they weren't allowed to delay a payment. This year, they're going to use surveys 2 and 6 to determine who gets paid. And this one, kind of humorous, the state will ask for reimbursement if the student returns to public school. So, good luck with that. And then, someone asked, can we get details of how they are calculated? And the answer was no, but if we want more details, ask. And then, the comment was made that the FES is punitive, it's not manageable now, and it would be preferable to remove the students, let them be direct, which is exactly what, you know, so that's, that's, these are all financial officers, you know, district financial officers who are talking. So it was a very good session. The Miami Dade CFO had a, had a breakout session on understanding the financial condition of your district, and talked quite a bit about how important position control is, that the assumptions that go into position control for the number of students and the number of positions has real-life consequences. You know, if they, if they're aggressive, as he put it, will fool the board. And if it's conservative, we fool the union, you know. Because then, we have the money, but what we're not opening up, that, being transparent, that we really could afford those raises. So, they made, they made the suggestion that we ask for a prediction, for that prediction after four months in the year. I know the audit committee, I believe it's on their risk assessment to do an audit of position control. So, you know, so I'll pass that along to them. Also, they talked about, he talked about Miami Dade, the ESAR funds. He said that he started living off the recurring revenue. In other words, they're using ESAR funds for recurring expenses. And he did it strategically, but they are now building their fund balance, knowing that it will be needed. Funding decisions will have to be made this year. Then there was a session on the teacher salary increase allocation. And that is where the new teachers get, you know, an extra pot of money from the state. And the Department of Education wants it paid out by October 1. They said it used to be that, that districts would go ahead and pay it out, and then go into their union negotiations, because having union negotiations done by October 1 is extremely difficult. We did that this year. But the districts that did not pay out, the TSIA, by October 1, got summoned to the Florida, to the Department of Education's board meeting, and had to explain themselves. So, it just, it makes the union negotiations difficult. You know, just pass that along. The wonderful session on culture, climate, and communications, staffing, and retention. And one of the comments that she made was that we should do climate surveys, but we also need to do something about it, you know, look at the results and make changes. Don't just send out surveys to send them out. Then, Department of Education Finance. This one, I, I, maybe we know about it, but there's a Driving Choice Grant Program. And they said that the applications are starting to come in, and districts are using this to purchase vans for school choice, but also, they, it can be used for bus driver incentive and retention. So I'm passing that along, okay? Then there was a ESAR Roundtable, which one of our former persons in, in Finance was, was a leader in that. They were talking about the reviews that are coming, that are going on, you know, that they, the Fed, federal government will come in and actually review how the money is getting spent. And this one was amusing, because they said that we have to use the federal regulations, because it's federal funds, and federal regulations require a competitive bid. But districts are using Florida Virtual School, state contract, and they're having to justify it, because there's an exception that if it's an emergency, they can use a single source. And I think COVID was, was the, the emergency there. But they do suggest regular drawdowns of ESAR funds every two weeks, and be transparent with ESAR to combat the idea that we don't need more dollars, and that we haven't wasted it. So, you know, transparency on that is good, and we are getting quarterly reports on that now. And then, this was important for us all to remember. Program evaluation, you know, this, these, we're putting in these programs, and with the assumption that it's going to go away after ESAR funds dry up. But they're saying, if it's successful, we don't want it to end, you know, so. And they're saying this to CFOs who are renowned for saying no. But they're saying, don't say no to everything, so we need to keep that in mind. Then, Auditor General came in. Ted Waller, who is an audit manager for the Auditor General, was just talking about audit reports that they have seen. And they said that 43 of 67 districts included findings addressing material weaknesses in internal control, noncompliance with applicable laws, rules, or regulations. And they said on the financial statement, financial statement material weaknesses, eight districts had findings. By the way, public, we did not have any, we're not one of those eight. But the year before, it was four. And they're finding weaknesses in IT, financial record-keeping, payroll and personnel, expenditures in purchasing, and capital outlay expenditures. And I'll leave it with this. They stated that as of June 30, 2021, the average financial condition ratio, which is the reserve fund statewide, was 11.98%, and it was 9.6% in the prior year. So, you know, we're just, just under 5%, I think. So, and, and they said that the reason for it is that districts are building up funds, just as the guy from Miami Dade said, that they're building it up to, because they know that there will be expenses that ESAR has taken care of, that they're still going to be paying afterward, so. And that was it. It was really excellent, excellent session, four days. Loved every minute of it.
We got a question, Ms. Tatum?
Just for the board in general, I would like to attend the School Financing course. It's coming up in February, so I think I talked to Ms. Means about that. But how do we make sure the funding gets approved?
Come on agenda.
Coming on the agenda one of these days in the near future? Okay, great. And then, why is it, maybe Ms. Saunders could answer this. Why is it difficult to get these negotiations done for teacher contracts before 1 October?
Well, I will say that this year, it wasn't, and past it is a combination of, of need and timing. The negotiation, of course, is with the district and with the union. Teachers are not on duty until August. So, to have them done within two months really is pretty quick. I think, and remember, our budget is not final by the legislature and the governor until the end of the school year. So, it's hard to budget a raise for the upcoming year until you know what your final budget is. So, that's why you really can't do a lot of conversation until the return in the fall. But I think our hope is, we did get it completed this year, and I think that's a good practice to try to continue. I think it was great for the entire district. So yes, it was mandated and expected by the state. I think if you have a great working relationship with both unions, and the board working with those entities, I think it's more likely to happen. So I'm hopeful that the district can accomplish the same thing this year.
Why do the teachers have to be on duty for negotiations? Or, it seemed like that's what you said, but...
Well, when I say that, they are part of the bargaining unit, not only the teachers, but also the ASME bargaining group. So if the employees are not on duty, for them to be called in for meetings, it's without, outside of their duty day. So, can they elect to voluntarily do that? Yes, they can, but generally, it's done once those individuals are back on duty.
Would there be any benefit to paying them an hourly wage and saying, we'd like to start these negotiations on 1 July instead of 1 August? Or, and paying them an hourly wage and saying, we'll pay you 25 bucks an hour, so we can start these negotiations 30 days earlier, so that we can get it done by 1 October?
And, and that would, we would have to have an agreement and a contract for that, because again, they're not on duty, so they're not compensated outside of their contract window. We don't have a contract with them to work in the summer. But could, could one be established? Could they be paid a non-contract hourly for bargaining purposes? The board could approve such and, and set that expectation, yes.
Off the, you know, just as, based on your experience, that sounds like a decent idea? Or, mm, sounds like a good idea, Mr. Tatum, but you know, in the big picture of things? But I don't know.
Well, I, I think willingness of, of the calendar time, because remember, if they're off vacation and so forth, they're, they're not working. I think if we wanted to set that expectation for a meeting or two in the summer, and we gave it advance notice and compensation, I think if we set that in the springtime, it would be more likely to happen than not.
And that would significantly improve our chances and ability to get to 1 October? Because it seems like, what I'm hearing, it's a really important and hard date. So I mean, it costs us 10, 15, $20,000 extra in these hourly salaries we have to pay out. But hey, we got this done by 1 October, and the benefits of that are worth investing the $20,000 in extra pay or something.
Sure, and, and it's all about conversation and time. It, it does take a, generally, a number of conversations back and forth before we can all agree to the final outcome. So, you know, I, I, I'm sure the district team would be more than happy, and we can certainly approach that to both unions, to see if they're willing and go ahead and set those in advance before people set their calendars of vacation, so that, that, that can begin, those conversations can begin. Really, you want them to begin in June, you know, have one or two meetings there, one or two prior to the start, and you have a better shot of finalizing it. But you really, it's hard to start before June, because you don't have your budget decided from the legislature before that.
Okay, thank you. That was it, yes, thank you.
All right, seeing no other bodies lit to speak, we'll move on to item number 11, our consent items, and we'll take a recommendation from the superintendent.
Yes, I recommend the approval of the consent agenda for December 13, 2022.
I'm moved.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion on that?
Raise your hand.
Other than the ones I pulled, correct?
Yes, yeah, we're taking out, we, we've removed, we've removed 1, 3, 5, 13, 14, 15, 18 from the consent item. So, yes, so the ones that were left over.
That was my question, so.
Yep, yep. And so, all in favor, go ahead and cast your votes now. And that passes 5 to 0, thank you very much. And moving to the next item, the public hearing. So I'm going to close this regular meeting now. And we are going to open up the public hearing to hear the considerations to adopt the new bylaw and amend bylaws of the school board policy. So this is a public hearing. Anyone who has, you don't have to sign up to give any kind of public comment. So if there's anybody out there that would like to give a public comment about the bylaws that we will be voting on here, to add to the policies, please come forward. Seeing no comments from a public hearing, I will close this public hearing. We're reconvened to the regular meeting. We're now, we're at number two, where we will vote to approve, to adopt a new, the new bylaws and amend the bylaws in school board policies. Do we have a recommendation from the superintendent?
Yes, I do. I recommend the approval to adopt a new bylaw and amend bylaws in school board policies. The bylaws are 0144, 0172, which are new, 0172.1, 0175, and 0175.1.
So I'm moved?
Well, I got a little bit more. Those are, those are the bylaws. Here are the policies. I have a whole, whole bunch. 9150, 1120, 3120, 4120, 2416, 2460, 2623, 3129, 3129.01, 5111.01, 5335, 6320, 1232, 3232, 4232, 6480, 6233, 8405, 8407, 8420, 8660.
So I'm moved?
Yeah, could you repeat that?
I'm not sure.
She says no.
So we got a motion?
I'll second. Mr. Chair, I would ask, though, that, for the public, I know we workshopped it this last week, but if, Mr. Chat, you know, if, if, if we could hear for the public what exactly these things are doing.
And I know, and if you can elaborate, tell us too, what, the one that we pulled from this, just FYI, that we're going to wait to, to see what happens in the legislature?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. So again, these are what happens probably now, almost at every board meeting, where you're either approving policies or bylaws, or approving the intent to advertise the policies or bylaws based on changes in the law, whether that's in statute or in rulemaking, either on the state level or, or federal level. So these set of policies here have been out for advertisement for more than 30 days, seeking public comment. We have not received any public comment. The board has also workshopped these policies last week. And so what you have in front of you are the edited version of those workshopped policies. And like the Chair noted, the one policy that was taken out from those policies that were advertised for more than 30 days was Policy 3410 on compensation. That policy will remain on my desk until, until we can kind of have a board workshop on that topic that's involved in that policy. So that Policy 3410 will, will not, is not in this packet to be approved today, and will remain on the, the policy desk to be brought to the board at a, at a further board meeting. So again, these policies are, for the most part, based on changes in law and in statute and in rulemaking that has happened over the course of the year.
We have a question from Mr. Tatum?
Yes, sir.
So can we go through the procedure, please, to pull one of these policies out? Because maybe I missed it, or I don't understand the process well enough. But I, the first time I heard that we were pulling one of these policies was, you know, 10 minutes ago. And it might be my favorite policy, I really liked that one. I wanted that one to be in there. And so I show up at the meeting, and it's like, it's not in there anymore. And so, I'm just wondering why I didn't know about it. And again, I'm not being accusatory, I just need to understand how the process works. And maybe I need to do a little more review, or I should have gone back and looked at something to understand this was going to be pulled. But again, the first time I found out about my favorite policy, let's say, being pulled, was 10 minutes ago, so.
Now, that's a good point, Mr. Tatum. So perhaps we'll look back at the process, and the workshop, the board discussed... Um, and the workshop, uh, the board discussed potentially pulling that policy. And then it was stated by the chair that at each, uh, board briefing with the superintendent that that would be discussed, that 3410 might be pulled. So maybe when that, when that happens, I'll make a note to make sure that before we get to this point, if a decision was made by, um, in those briefings to to pull that policy or policies from consideration for approval at the next board meeting, I'll make sure that that is a formal communication to the board so that instead of just publishing the policies and presuming, uh, which is probably my my mistake, that, um, that that everybody was informed that 3410 was pulled, I'll make sure that the board is informed of that through the board administrator more formally so that you know what's coming, so that, and this, to your point, well taken, that we don't get to this spot where you just found out by me saying that, so.
And maybe.
If if the board agrees with that procedure.
And maybe, I'm just saying, maybe you told me that, Ms. Saunders, that we went through a lot of things and, you know, policy 34.10 was pulled and I went, okay, next, and maybe, did I miss it or or?
It it was discussed in the workshop. Uh, and at that time, a board member did say that they really would like it to be pulled but wanted to discuss it further in the briefing. So I think what Mr. Chapman said probably i- is correct. It was stated, I'm not sure if when the agency clerk sent you guys the updates? Did she put it on the update?
That's where I think that, uh, there was a lot of updates, sorry to interrupt, but there was a lot of updates. So in the very beginning of the meeting, when I said the chair finds good cause for the amendments, that was one of the amendments that was done. So when Ms. Means, she sends that out, um, I think it's in purple font, if I remember correctly.
You tried to highlight it.
It's, yeah, so it's highlighted and it'll say what the amendment changes were from, from the agenda that was posted and then throughout that week. And so it was listed on there that we were pulling that by, that that policy. Um, but to your point though, it is listed with other stuff too. So it's not like it was by itself, hey, we're pulling this policy, it was not listed like that. But it's listed with all the amendment changes that could possibly have been done with the.
So on Friday at noon is our cut, and and that's partly the discussion we had at the very beginning of the meeting. Friday at noon, if there are going to be any items pulled per board request, et cetera, that's the cut. And then Ms. Means, she reposts the agenda, but she does send a summary to all the board, hey, kinda, these are the things that are being amended. So if, a- and again, this is a new process. So if I get a request after that time, we generally do not amend again for that very reason. Because we do want to make sure when you walk in the door, you are aware of what is that agenda now really set for. We know what was published, but now what do you really have the final version? And then we, it doesn't mean that things can't be amended here, but we try not to keep amending because it's very difficult for the board to be able to walk in and say, yes, I know what this item is. So do look at that update on Friday because if anything changes from that original posting, it will be done on on that summary.
A little better attention to detail on my part now that I understand the.
It was a lot, it it's a lot of stuff and and that, this is really the first official meeting, so, um, yes.
I just don't want to create a lot of extra work for you, you know, well, I'll write it in an email and then I'll send Mr. Tatum a personal email and then I'll write him a little hand note to make sure that he, you know, if it's, if it's, if it's somewhere and I have access to it, that's good, I'm just learning the process, so.
Yep, no, it's good, good point.
One, and then since we're on the topic, what is it? It was mentioned before that a a board member can ask for an agenda item to be pulled.
Consent, if there's something on consent that you prefer not to be on consent, but you want it on new business, then in our briefing, you bring it to our attention and then that item will be on the amended version on Friday when it's reposted.
But I can, if I ask that, when you say I can request, that doesn't mean, does that mean that it will happen? Or does that just means that you and the chair will?
It's executed.
It's executed.
Yeah, i- if you ask, i- it's done. After that final amendment is done, unless the board and the chair feels comfortable, generally, it won't be moved at that time for that very reason of making sure we have transparency for everybody to know what's coming. Uh, but it could be something that could be placed on another meeting or so forth. But generally, that's the cut. Um, if you have a request to put an item on the agenda that you don't see, that has to be approved by the chair and the superintendent. And it may not be on that date, it could be at another time because it may need to be workshopped or so forth. But if it's on consent and you want it moved to new business in the briefing you asked to be moved and it'll be on the amend amended agenda, placed on new business, uh, on that Friday update.
And if it, but if it's afternoon on Friday, then what Ms. Spray requested today, that's the process.
That's the process.
All right, I'm getting smarter every day.
Sure, sure, not a problem.
No more questions on those, so I appreciate that. We had a motion by, I believe, Ms. Messenger. We had a second by Ms. Foreman to adopt these. So we'll go ahead and make a vote on that with our system to approve the new bylaws that the superintendent stated and the school board policies and.
I'd like to read them all into the record, please.
It was already read, it was already read to the record, I believe so, and that passes five to nothing. Thank you very much. And, um, moving to item number 13, public comment for new business items, there's, there was none signed up. So we'll move past that. Uh, 14, there is no new business side, oh, excuse me. 14 new business discussion items pulled from the consent. We'll start with number one, which is the approval to the purchase marine mechanic equipment and services. Um, estimated amount $150,000. So, uh, Ms. Spray, you you pulled, and let me ask, and we'll do this right now, from, for the rest of these, would you like, um, the superintendent to give the explanation to what those items were?
I, I.
And then we, or do you have questions? And then then we'll, we'll approve and go through our motions and we'll discuss.
Right, uh, whatever way you want to do it, I just.
I mean, that's, I'm assuming that's going to be the easiest way.
So would you like?
I understand what it's for.
Recommendation, uh, first and then you get a.
Discussion.
Yes, and then we'll do a motion.
Sure, sure, that's fine.
Yes, yes.
We can go through the process.
Go ahead and give us a recommendation for number one, please.
All right. Uh, I recommend the approval to purchase marine mechanical equipment and services, SDMC number 23-0091-BS, estimated in the amount of $150,000.
So I'm moved. I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion to, and a second for discussion. Ms. Spray, you've got your speaker.
That's why I pulled some of these because I I did want to have the discussion. Um, I toured MTC, uh, probably last summer, uh, before I even became a candidate. Um, and I did look at the marine section there. And I talked to the department head and asked about the different engines that they work on. And some of them are donated by the community or people bring their boat in in particular to have students to learn to, uh, figure out what's wrong with the motor and it teaches them, it really does. You got a broken engine, bring it into the school and they can probably learn from fixing that. The $150,000, um, one of those is, you explained to me, is spare parts and training, but it also at the top says it's with a a grant from the Cape Fund. I don't know how much that Cape Fund grant was. And then it also says that this is a, um, for one year. Um, do we ever buy motors? Are we buying motors that could be put into the capital instead of onto this? That was my big concern with that, that's all, very, just generic questions.
You would like, I'll have Mr. Wagner come up so he can.
Absolutely.
Sure, absolutely. Chairman? Very good, thank you. So, uh, to answer your question, so $150,000, uh, you asked, you actually brought up a few points. Uh, for marine mechanics, uh, we have renewed that program. It used to be on the the east side of the building, now we've moved it to the west side. And we've renewed our partnerships with Suzuki, Mercury, Yamaha. And so you're right, we do get donations. Uh, we have been renewed the the industry donations this year and we have received a lot of donations. But you still have to purchase, uh, equipment and supplies as well. So Yamaha gave us a great wave runner. Uh, this money is going to be utilized since, uh, the whole jet skis and wave runners are a big deal here in our community to purchase additional wave runner, also purchase an additional boat, additional powerheads, uh, adi- additional, uh, hands-on tools for the the students as well. So, uh, yep, we, uh, we're continuing to build out that program. We have two instructors and we also dual enroll from Manatee High School as well at Manatee Tech School College. So what you saw was that, uh, we're not, we're not so into bringing, everybody bringing their marine boats to us. It's, uh, that's not it because we really want to work on the newest, uh, equipment. So when our students graduate, they're ready to go out in business and industry right away, uh, working on the new engine. So this would allow us to, uh, to update, continue to update that program.
So would that, would that wave runner that you're saying you're going to purchase, would that be a capital?
It would be a capital expenditure, it would be a, have a number on it, so we would track it. Uh, the students would take it apart, put it back together again, then we put trouble, uh, trouble it and so it, uh, they have to figure out what the trouble codes are and why it's not working. And so we use it as a teaching tool, uh, for the students. But we want them to be working on the newest equipment as opposed to somebody they bring it in. 20 years old and it's just not going to have the value for our students.
Okay, that was basically all I had on that. I just don't understand that process for not only me, but for the new board members and the public.
Good, and one more thing I can add for a level of assurance is that we have advisory councils for all of our programs at Manatee Tech School College. So we have industry experts from the field sitting with our instructors, giving them advice on what needs to be purchased, what kind of equipment do you need to have? Just not talking about marine, I'm talking about all of them. Uh, and our instructors come from business and industry also. So they're, they're the experts as well and then we have business and industry helping us, uh, guide us. So our students graduate and they're ready for jobs and careers.
So is this a $150,000? Did you ask for that last year or did the purchasing department ask for that same $150,000 last year? Then $150,000 we're going to ask for next year?
No, this is more just authorization, so, and we may not spend exactly $150,000, we may spend $138,000. We may, you know, so we have identified the cost of items and that's what we're asking for is to spend, you know, up to $150,000 so we can update our.
And then if you don't spend that $150,000, then that money goes right back into our.
It goes back into the program, right where it came from.
Back into the program?
Back to the marine program.
All right.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Ms. Messenger?
I just wanted to add, um, no, you're fine, um, for Mrs. Spray's, uh, so she knows that, um, you talked about donations. Wait, when time, there have been times where we'll receive a boat or we'll receive a car for a donation and those actually do usually go on our agenda and under consent.
Okay.
So you'll, you can always keep an eye out, I'll sometimes give them a shout out, oh, thank you. I can't remember, um, uh, Mr. Horn donated, I forget, was it a car or a boat?
Yeah.
You know, we say thank you and, you know, but it's usually, that's usually also a consent item, but they they will come, if they're sizable enough, they will come before the board and we'll, we'll see them.
Well, when I did tour the facility, there was a vehicle in there and it was being worked on for educational purposes that belonged to a citizen. So I thought that was kind of a good, good thing, to be honest with you, uh, because that teaches them. Uh, but I'm good with that item, okay?
Mr. Tatum?
Just some more edification questions for me, potentially. So is it, this is a capital expenditure, is that my understanding, is that, is that, like, Mrs. Messenger is like, well, it is, it's not, but then I thought I heard you say it's a cap, but.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Uh, some of it could be, uh, training would not be a capital expense. So it's up to $150,000 spend for multiple financial buckets based on the the need of the service.
Okay.
Okay, uh, if it's a part or buying a a motor, that could be a capital expense. Uh, you could need training to bring in an expert to train, that that's not going to be a capital expense. And then some of the money is Cape funds because we have vocational dollars to support those programs, which would come from that as well. So that's why there are multiple funding buckets listed. And that just says that you have $150,000 to do what's needed to support that up to based on what your need arises at the time throughout the the year. So instead of us having to go back to the board for every item that leads up to that, this kind of blankets it so that they don't have to come back and can finish the work for the school year.
And CAPE is is an acronym for a fund or some sort of grant or something?
Yes, i- i- it's in our vocational, I don't know what the acronym, but it's a vocational funding source for all of our vocational programs.
So Ms. Spray asked if this is, again, I'm edifying myself here. So she asked if it's a budgeted expense. So when you created the budget last year, when we, when the board or whoever created the budget, was this a planned expense, we knew we were going to have to, we'd like to spend $150,000? Or is this just a general bucket of, or a couple buckets of money where we programmed money into those buckets? And as the year went along, we said, well, looks like we, we would like to do this. And I guess my, my follow-on thought process there is who's watching those buckets of money to make sure that when we do spend $150,000, that, you know, you're, we're managing those buckets of money throughout the year? And I'm sure somebody is, but it seems like.
You are.
We are, okay, good.
You are, every month, but these two ladies right here, all of us, each month, but this is not an added expense that'll affect our general fund balance or our spend. At the beginning of every year, and we'll do a a basic budget workshop in January. Uh, we allocate how much money we're going to put in different arenas. And then based on the spend of needing to use those dollars, we will, and those are what's on consent because you've already approved the budget. So now we're getting to the point where we actually want to spend. I don't have authority to write a contractor, spend over $50,000. So if it's anything that could lead larger than that, you've already approved, I've got money allocated over here for these purposes. I'm now having to go to the board to request us to spend because it exceeded my spending authority. So that, that's what this process is.
Great, thank you.
And again, I didn't, is this a recurring, have you budgeted for this last year?
We've budgeted for.
And we're going to do it next year again.
We've budgeted for this amount in in vocational projects.
Okay.
But it may, next year, I may not need $150,000 for the marine science project at MTC. Uh, Mr. Wagner may say, we don't need 150 for that next year because we're, we're up to date with what we need. I need the 150 to go to automotive next year. So that will be when we have our, you approved that general budget in September.
Right.
Uh, but you get a general draft of what we're looking for in June. But it could be that it needs to be a reoccurring expenditure and if so, we have to come back the next year because our spend i- is one calendar year. So if we need to spend $150,000 next year, he'll come back, it'll be on consent.
Kind of, but it may be something else.
But it could be some, yeah, so it could be.
Project, okay, I got you, okay, that's just, that's all I really had on that. I'm like, okay, if we're spending $150,000 every year in that one particular area, you know, that's like, okay, are we replacing everything every year? Um, that's a lot of money because all, all of these consent items I pulled are, uh, to me, I'm more focused on the K or pre-K, now three through three. And I don't see anything on this and you had said that we do all of that during the early part of the curriculum process. So that's my concern is, okay, we're really spending an awful lot of money here, but I don't see anything for, um, actual younger.
And the dollars we're spending on this, we could not have spent on pre-K or K to three reading.
Because of the grant.
Only for vocation.
Right, because of the grant, I got it.
Now, next, next, gen, next meeting, we may have a consent item for K through three spending because it's now time to purchase something new or different. But it's just, that's just, was a consent item for this.
Okay.
Did you have another question or you just didn't? Did you have another question? You just didn't pick it off? Okay. So we got a motion and we got a second. So let's go ahead and vote on the approval to purchase the marine mechanical equipment and services. And you can vote now. It is up. That item passes five to nothing. Moving on to the consent item that was pulled, item number three, approval of the purchase of behavior in educational consulting.
Yes, I recommend the purchase of behavior in education, educational consulting, SDMC number twenty-three dash oh oh nine two dash BS. Estimated in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
So moved.
A second.
All right, any discussion?
Yep, since I pulled that. Yeah. Um, on the agenda, it says, uh, a hundred thousand dollars for that. And my question is, behavioral consulting, you know, how much are we actually spending on behavioral, uh, demographic issues? Um, and I don't know, is there something that we can do? Maybe if we're having so many problems, because I've, everyone has seen some of the emails that we've gotten uh, in the last couple of weeks. Um, it may not be necessarily a behavioral expert that needs to be there. But maybe a, an additional presence of, um, SROs that could have an impact for these incidents are occurring. So that was my concern about that one. Um, you know, are reinforcing our policies to kind of tamp down some of the behavior issues, issues that we're having in the schools? Or can we just, you know, look at putting more SROs in some of these schools where there's? And I have, I have, I will also mention that I've had a conversation with our sheriff about scheduling time with him to get more details on where, uh, we have cases of bad behavior, where they're happening, how many times it's happening. And the basic demographics of, of, uh, what's going on. So, but I just wanted to pull that just to get an understanding on how much we are actually spending on behavioral type issues. And I, I understand it's not just, you know, bad behavior and fighting and things like that. It's also mental and all of those other kind of things that I could have probably taken advantage of when I was a kid.
Superintendent, do you want to explain what this is?
Go ahead.
Sure, sure. I'll have Dr. Thompson come up as well. So a couple of things.
Okay.
Uh, SROs, uh, provide a wonderful resource for our schools, but they're only allowed to react to violation of law.
Right.
So they are on the reactive edge. They're not our employee, they're law enforcement. So they're there when we have, uh, criminal possibly types of behavior that they need to act or take, take root or take charge. What this service is, is more the preemptive approach of the behavioral or mental health. So Dr. Thompson can speak to what this particular item is, but also all the different mental health partnerships and things that we're doing in the allocation.
And it's just, it, again, it's not accusatory or anything like that. It's more new at this part.
Yes.
Uh, and I want to understand where our dollars are going and what we're, the benefit that we're getting from those dollars as well.
So, um, thank you for the questions. We always like to explain our work. Um, this consulting company is specifically for our special needs student population. And we are paying for it with a grant that is, that comes under learning loss from COVID. So a lot of our children with autism maybe have never been in a formal school setting before. And it's not necessarily bad behavior. It's just learning routines and procedures and expectations and being able to be successful academically. That's what this is specifically for. The hundred thousand is on a line item in the ESR grant that you all approved in November. So this is really just bringing in this consulting company. We didn't name the consulting company in the grant. We were keeping our eye on this consulting company. It's new to Florida. Um, they have put behavior specialists in thirty schools in Pinellas County this year. So we've been watching the progress to make sure that it's a successful endeavor. And then we're now following suit.
Okay. So they, so I'm guessing that you did some follow-up and you have a lot of great success stories with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. And for disclosure, I do have a special need grandson that is in Pinellas County. So I'd be interested to see how that impacted him.
Share data.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I had on that item.
Okay. Mr. Tatum has a question?
Sure. I don't know if it's for you ma'am, or maybe for Ms. Saunders, or maybe even for the finance people. So, uh, grant funding. So we make a budget at the beginning of the year and all of a sudden we write a grant and it comes back and, yeah, you get five hundred thousand dollars. So is that like getting your IRS refund? You know, I don't want to say it's free money, but it just showed up above and beyond what we expected to get for revenue. And it just goes into the general fund. And then, because you said this is being paid for by a grant. So, so that's, we got the hundred thousand dollar grant. The money goes into the general fund. And then you come to us and say, we'd like to spend the grant money. And because it's over fifty thousand dollars, we say, okay, and it goes out. Is that?
Yes and no. It doesn't, it doesn't ever go into the general fund appropriation because we can't, if we write, if we have grant dollars and we can only spend it per that grant authority as, so you've already approved it. So that's one step for us. The second step, if it goes over fifty thousand dollars, I have to now come back to the board to say, now I would like to purchase it. As you've already approved our authority to do it in this manner. Now we're ready to actually execute the purchase. Because it's a hundred thousand dollars, we now have to come back to you to say, okay, it's time for us to purchase it. The grant has been approved, the state approved it, they've released the money. So we're now coming to you to execute the grant. So we can only be spent in this manner. If we do not spend it, I cannot use those dollars on anything else because I wrote it this way. Now, because it's ESR dollars, they give you a whole bucket list of things you can buy with it. But I would have to go amend the grant to change how I'm using that piece of the grant.
When we get grant money during the year, it's above and beyond the normal.
It's above and beyond.
And it goes into CAPE, CAPE grant.
Well, that's a different grant. That, that's a different categorical. But this is.
It would go into the.
It goes into the ESR grant.
Consulting grant, yes.
And we have meetings with our finance people every Tuesday with all of our grants. And we review where we are with every grant every week, monitoring it. Any other questions?
Just that, you, this is a grant and you're saying it's, we're using this through ESR funds, ESR funds, whatever.
Remember those expire September of twenty-four.
Twenty-four. So if this company, if we're paying for this, uh, consulting firm, that could go away.
Well, what will happen if we find that it's a great valuable resource that we want to continue?
Right.
Then when we build our budget, we'll either have to move it into the ESE IDEA grant dollar, federal dollars. Or general dollars, or you're right, or you can't do it.
Okay.
So it, once that ESR money is gone, whatever we're spending for that, unless we determine to continue it in a different place, it's gone.
Okay. I'm good.
No, their hands are up to speak. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
We had a motion and we had a second. So let's go ahead and vote for the approval of the purchase of behavior in education consulting through the system and passes unanimously. Next item that was pulled, number five, approval to purchase Bloomberg Software Terminals, um, Superintendent?
Yes, I recommend to approve to purchase the Bloomberg Software Terminals Revision One, SDMC number twenty-two dash oh one oh six dash BS. Estimated in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand.
Thank you. Do we?
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion. We got a second. Questions?
Yep, of course.
Hey, go ahead, Ms. Spray.
Sorry. I don't want to labor on all of these things. I just need to understand. Okay? So on the agenda, uh, consent item five, it says a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then it attachments that were down deep into the system. Uh, the terminals, we're doing two terminals. Uh, and I understand this is really good at Southeast. I saw, did see the video that Ms. Mean sent to me and I'm like, oh, that's a pretty good program. Uh, but we're adding two more terminals at a total cost at four thousand, uh, forty dollars. And I'm guessing that's monthly. For twenty-four months, that totals ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty. Um, so, and it's renewable, by the way. I think it was renewable. Am I correct in that? That it's renewable for two years?
It will come back before us, yeah.
It, right, it will come back before us at another a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So every year, I'm guessing when they, and that's my question. We're doing with automatic renewals. It says automatic renewal here for two years. Uh, so that's like a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand. And I understand equipment, we're not going to have to buy again. It's software upgrades and all of those kind of things. Um, but to me, it's a little misleading that, okay, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the agenda. But when you look at this and do the math, it's ninety-six thousand, nine sixty, not the hundred and fifty. And then the automatic renewal. And I, and it, I looked at the program, I really did. Um, and the dual enrollment with Southeast and this is, is a great program. But I think dollar-wise, it's a little misleading that we're saying it's just for a hundred and fifty thousand, it's for a hundred and fifty thousand. But in reality, the difference is fifty-three thousand, forty dollars of what we're paying. So that's kind of takes me. I mean, why, why wouldn't we have done this for a hundred thousand dollars instead of a hundred and fifty, if I do the math and it's this way?
A couple of things. Uh, that gives the authority for us to spend up to that amount. If it's deemed that we need additional computers or terminals or so forth. We, we're expanding this program into two high schools for the second semester. So yes, we have on this contract, the ability to bring you the exact same contract to renew for, for two additional years. For, to pay for the software. But please also note that any contract we have, uh, we can cancel within thirty days. So the reason we don't go ahead and approve the costs for the next two years, we have to determine next year if we are going to execute that contract. So just because it gives you the ability to pay up to a hundred and fifty or to go with two additional years, doesn't mean we're going to. It will have to come back before the board.
As another consent item, correct?
As another consent item, yeah.
So, uh, the reason we didn't put the exact amount for ninety-six thousand or a hundred thousand, we do give a little bit of latitude. If it's deemed based on the enrollment of the class that they need more.
That was my next question.
Right. That, okay, we said, but because of, if we say a hundred, then that's our mark that we can spend. If it's deemed that we've got two or three classes that love it, and we only bought for one, then I have to come back to the board to get the expansion of the, of the, so that's why when you look at what type of program it is, maybe we might need a couple of more computers. So we built in a little bit, but it doesn't mean we're going to spend exactly a hundred and fifty. Could be less than that, but we can't spend more than that.
So do we know how many students participate in this actual class?
We will, we will know that in, in January, uh, for second semester. Yeah. We know we've expanded it. It's already at Southeast. But we have two additional high schools and you don't know the exact number of students till you come back for second semester.
Right.
They've requested they can do schedule changes. So we don't know the exact, we won't know the exact number until January.
Do we know how many are in, in doing this program right now, if it's in Southeast?
We, we can, I don't know off the top of my head, but we can get the information of the anticipated enrollment for second semester. And I can get that information.
That would be great.
Sure.
That would be, that could be, because that was the biggest question is how many students do we have actually enrolled in that program? And again, cost versus benefit. And if we have only five students in there, you know what I'm saying? Yeah. I, I'm just, that's just a generic term for that. But that's the one thing that, I just think it's high for that, a hundred and fifty thousand. If, I mean, if the actual is ninety-six, I would have probably asked for a hundred and twenty instead. I can't imagine, uh, two other terminals would cost another fifty-four thousand dollars or fifty-three thousand dollars.
The terminals plus the software licensing.
For the year. So four thousand times the twenty-four thousand. If you added another unit, another class unit, right off the bat, it'd be twenty-four thousand. Cause it's, well, excuse me, forty-eight thousand because it's four thousand for the software a year, roughly forty-eight thousand. So we're already to the threshold of a hundred and fifty, even if we have one new classroom. Cause we need that software again for that one classroom.
Right. It's just.
But I can get you the number of enrolled. And again, this is a program we were able to expand and we use, uh, millage funds. This is one of our, uh, STEM, uh, projects that we've done with the millage.
How much of this comes out of the millage?
All but the teacher.
Uh, the whole hundred and fifty comes from the millage?
Whatever expenditure we have for that, the computers and the software comes out of the millage.
Okay. All right. That's all I had on that item.
Seeing no one else lit up, we can go ahead and vote for this item, uh, to approve to purchase a Bloomberg software and terminals. Go ahead and cast your votes. And it passes unanimously. Moving number thirteen, uh, the item pulled, number thirteen, approval of Lakewood Ranch High School Classroom Edition, Administrative Office Security Upgrades Agreement between the owner, us, Ajax Construction, Amendment Number Three to the project. Guarantee maximum price of ninety-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine. Go ahead, Ms., uh, Ms. Superintendent?
Yes, in the next two, uh, items are going to be very, very similar. Um, and it goes back to that construction workshop we just had on a rebate. So, um, I recommend the approval of Lakewood Ranch High School Classroom Edition, Administrative Office Security Upgrades Agreement between the owner and Ajax Construction Company LLC. Amendment Number Three, Guaranteed Maximum Price and the amount of ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
So moved. I'll second.
And Mr. Superintendent, do you want to, uh, explain what?
Mr. Rinaldi.
Or Mr. Rinaldi, what, what are we doing with that ninety-four?
Yep.
Almost ninety-five K?
Glad you're here.
So, uh, goo- good morning. I guess it's good afternoon now.
Oh, my goodness.
Um, Ajax Construction is doing the addition, um, at Lakewood Ranch right now. So they are on campus. Uh, when we have a major project happening on campus and we've got a smaller project, uh, we look at taking advantage of the economies of already having the contractor there. They've got their administration there. They have their trailer there. So we try to do the smaller projects. And this is, um, a security project at the main entry lobby that would, would be coming up as, as part of the security audits that are being done. So we're taking advantage of Ajax already being on site. The architect designed it for us and we're ready to move forward with it.
And again, this project was initially, uh, uh, budgeted and approved in May of twenty-one. Then there was a board workshop in August of twenty-two, uh, for increase, uh, of two million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars. Am I correct in that?
That, that's correct for, and then that's the, the, um, associated financing for the classroom addition that we're doing.
Right, okay.
And then we're rolling this.
That's what I want to understand that that's what we were, they had actually approved because I was not on this board. So this amendment, again, guaranteed maximum price. I keep seeing that guaranteed maximum price on these amendments whenever we do these amendments. Um, so the amendment that was approved on August twenty-third with a guaranteed maximum price of, can you read that? Fifteen million, two, twenty-six oh seventy-seven. So you cannot go over that for that approved portion of the project. Am I understanding?
For the classroom addition, correct.
Okay. And so this part is saying ninety-four thousand, eight fifty-nine for the amendments in the lobby? Am I understanding that? And some security?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to understand that this is what these are for. Um, and it's all funded by capital.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. It was just, like I said, these were going to, some of these were going to be very simple for clarification for myself, new board members and to the public that I am actually looking at our dollars. Thank you.
So nobody else lit there. So we will vote to approve Lakewood Ranch High School Classroom Edition Amendment for the security upgrades. Go ahead and cast your votes now. Passes unanimously. Number, item number fifteen, Superintendent? Or fourteen, excuse me.
Yes, I recommend the approval of Manatee High School grandstands and parking lot improvements. Change orders one and two, agreement between owner and Creative Contractors, Inc. And the reduction in the amount of two hundred and six thousand six hundred and sixty-six, sixty-three dollars and ten cents.
So moved. I'll second.
All right, Mr. Rinaldi, would you like to come up and, I mean, I'm assuming, Ms. Superintendent, you would like for Mr. Rinaldi to explain?
Yes, yes. And then I'll, I'll have questions afterwards.
So, so this is the process that we go through to realize the sales tax savings. The construction manager has the material in their bid that includes the sales tax savings. We then issue a PO directly from the district to that vendor. So that we're not charged sales tax. And then we do a change order to pull it out of the contractor's bid. So it, you'll see these coming through on a fairly regular, we try to get two or three of them together. Because sometimes we have upwards of fifteen vendors and POs that we're working with in order to get the, the sales tax savings. So this is just a process to realize the sales tax savings and to pull it out of the contractor's, uh, bid.
Bid, okay.
Or guaranteed maximum price.
This is, we're getting it back from the contractor from the original budget of three million dollars. And again, this is for grandstands. That's a lot. And for, uh, you know, my thing would be, okay. We're spending three million dollars on grandstands and upgrades to the parking lot in the field or whatever. Um, maybe future agenda item, transportation for some of our teams. When they are going from, uh, campus to campus and/or conference games. Uh, that was brought up to me during my campaign. We have all of these pretty things, but we can't transport our kids to different, uh, uh, schools for competitions. So that was just a generic. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Messenger?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, say one more thing for Mrs. Bray. Um, I had said it to Mr. Tatum. But, um, a couple of years ago, the board did a facility study. It was a comprehensive study of all of the sites, all of our buildings. And, um, the company went to all the sites, reviewed everything that was needed to be fixed. So that when we made our capital plan, it was based on the, the needs of each school. Uh, and this was actually one of the things that was specifically addressed that was in, in disrepair that needed to be fixed. So I don't know if you've received that study, but it's really beneficial because it shows you. You know, we ranked, it ranked them. Here's ones in poor condition. Here's ones in fair condition. Here's, you know. And we've really worked to chip away at the ones that were poor and, and work our way through to make sure that we're doing it based on data. So I just wanted you to know where that came.
Did a board member go with that team to?
It was an outside company that we hired to do the study.
And the, and they presented to the board?
Yes.
Right. I'm just asking, did a board member actually go out and look at the grandstands and say, yeah?
They were, so they were, you couldn't even go underneath them. They were condemned.
Oh, okay. Is that bad?
These particular grandstands.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. I'm just asking, did, was a board member actually involved in the study? Did they go look? Or did they go look and say, oh, wow, you're right, that looks really bad? Or anything like that? 'Cause that's something I thought would be interesting to do.
I know, me personally, I'm not a, I, I don't know construction. I'm ignorant to that. So I'm, I don't. If they brought me along with them, I, I would say, yeah, yeah, I believe your thirty years of consulting, whatever you're doing. I, you know, Mr. Peacock's here talking about thirty, I don't know construction like that. So, um, but I don't know if any board member went with them.
But I know that they looked in every single nook and cranny you could possibly imagine to find every single thing that we could have, make sure that it got addressed. And that was one of the things that they found. So, and I remember when that came before us, that was, I actually specifically asked about these grandstands. But I remember when that came before us, um, and, and really wanting to look at those specific items from that study to, to really look at that.
Right. Okay.
I see no one else, though, with their hands up. Let's go ahead and vote for the approval of Manatee Grandstands Parking Improvements. Reduction in the amount of two hundred and six thousand dollars. Go ahead and cast your vote now. And it is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to number fifteen.
Yes, I recommend the approval of proposal twenty-three dash oh oh seven five dash RG E-Rate Campus Cabling Upgrade. Twenty-three to twenty-four and the amount of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars.
So moved. I'll second.
All right, we got a, we got a motion in a second. Mr. Hanson, if you wanna come on down and explain, uh, this project to us. Thank you.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Board Chair, Vice Chair, Board Member, Superintendent, Scott Hanson, Chief Technology Officer. What may I, any specific questions, or would you like to give me an overview?
Go ahead, give an overview, if you would, please.
Sure. Absolutely.
Yeah, I might answer the questions I have.
Okay, absolutely. So, um, we participate in what's referred to as the Federal E-Rate Program. Or you, it's also referred to, you'll hear it acronym USAC, Universal Services Administrative Company. They're the governing body that oversees for the, um, FCC, the E-Rate Program. Uh, oftentimes you look at your cellular bill, or if you still have a traditional phone in your home, you'll see an FCC surcharge or tax. That is made up of the E-Rate Program. Anywhere annually, um, they show out almost three hundred billion dollars to public schools and libraries, both public and charter. Uh, that qualify for services. And they refer to these services as category one or category two services. And there's an eligible services list, certain equipment. Predominantly in the past, we've used E-Rate to, uh, fund our network equipment. So building networking connectivity and fiber infrastructure along with internet access. And we qualify based on the free and reduced lunch and the eligible student per funding, which is referred to as a school multiplier. And the school multiplier happens in a five-year segment. So twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-five, the school multiplier was a hundred and sixty-seven dollars per student. Based on the number of students prior to twenty-twenty-one that we qualified for, that gave us our bucket of money for that five-year spend. And that bucket of money was about seven point seven million dollars that we had access to. Our share of that seven point seven million dollars is twenty percent. So anytime we take something, so I'm gonna break it down. Before I get into the E-Rate cabling piece, I'm gonna give you an easier example. Sub Middle School transferring from the old legacy school to the new school. We filed for E-Rate last year. You have to do this one year in advance when you're gonna spend the money. If we had not had the Federal E-Rate Program, the network equipment to put into the new school. Because the equipment that was in the existing school was fairly antiquated. It was time for it to be, uh, updated. And you can update network equipment through E-Rate every three years. That's fairly aggressive. We go anywhere from five to seven years. But we actually are eligible through E-Rate to upgrade that equipment every three years. That equipment would have cost the school district roughly a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Our cost, the twenty percent of that, was just at thirty-two thousand dollars, 'cause we applied for that one year in advance. So that's a, a more simplistic example. Now, fast forward to the cabling piece. I would, um, I identified in twenty-nineteen, my first year here, some concerns over our cabling infrastructure moving forward. And really looking at, but what does it look like ten, fifteen, twenty years in advance? I would equate this to making a decision on our roadways. Do we expand the avenue to our left and the right from a two-lane to a four-lane? And what time do you do that? When, or do you, do you wait until there's a major problem and then you try to, try to fix it at that time? Or when you start having complete failures in your infrastructure? So what our team did is we, we looked at our secondary schools, 'cause that's where, uh, we felt, uh, we had the biggest need. And Lakewood Ranch and Manatee High School were two areas where our, two, two of our secondary schools were. Outside of the new wing addition at Lakewood Ranch, which is gonna be taken care of through new construction. We had some concerns about some of the structure cabling on that campus, looking forward five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. To stay ahead of that, we're trying to use these E-Rate dollars that we have access to. So in a worst-case scenario, what we're bringing before you is next year, we would go in and outfit and retrofit. The cabling infrastructure at both Manatee High and Lakewood Ranch. The following year, we look at two, anywhere from two to four schools, the following year. And then the money rolls over in twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, we'll get a new bucket of money and funding. And we're gonna continue the recommendations to address all of our secondary schools first. As long as we're not doing major capital improvements on those campuses. We're not gonna go in and retrofit an entire school if we're gonna tear a building down, right? So we're gonna stay ahead. We have our capital planning meetings, and we'll adjust year to year. But the idea behind this is, this is taking in account actual monies that we have allocated to us through the Federal E-Rate Program. Our maximum spend, worst-case scenario for both Lakewood Ranch and Manatee High School is just at four hundred and fifty-seven K for next year. And that's worst-case scenario. It may be less, but that's worst-case scenario that we're applying. This funding window opens up and we, and before we move forward, we can't do any work until July one of twenty-twenty-three. One, because we won't have access to that four hundred and fifty-seven K. Two, federal E-Rate, E-Rate guidelines say we don't have access to move forward until we get a funding commitment letter. That funding commitment letter resides on the board approving this project, and we have to have that project approved by the end of March of twenty-three. What we're trying to do is get ahead of this. The earlier we file, we get in that window, so USAC can view this. And we go through a, a specific auditing process. We follow our local procurement rules and policies. And then we have to follow the, the policies and the competitive bidding that E-Rate sets forward as well. So there's a whole process goes through. And then we're have, we're eligible for being audited up to ten years after the purchase of this equipment or the structure cabling. So we have to keep auditing records for up to ten years for this project.
Okay, so this is basically, this is basi, I'm sorry, this is basically like fiber optic pulling?
Fiber optic and a, any cabling, um, that we have in our vocational labs, any cabling that we utilize for our wireless access points. But it's retrofitting these two schools. Again, my hope and desire is the maximum spend will be, obviously, it will not be, it will not exceed four hundred and fifty-seven K. Uh, probably will fall hopefully a little bit less. But again, we're bringing to the board and asking for E-Rate to fund us at the maximum potential. Because till we do complete walkthroughs with the awarded vendor, we're not necessarily, and we took worst-case scenarios. So there's a certain amount of feat that we can run a cable from room to room, back to our communication closets. What we did is we specked out the worst-case scenario for every one of those drops, um, for this project. So it's our desire that we'll be under the four fifty-seven or the twenty percent, but we're only gonna spend twenty percent of the total project. And it won't exceed what you, what you have before you today.
Okay, twenty percent of the total?
Total project, correct. For, for each school site.
For each school site, because from my understanding in the briefing, this is, this four hundred and fifty-seven thousand is our portion.
That is our portion.
Of the grant that we're going to get from.
I wouldn't consider it necessarily a gra, I wouldn't call it a grant. That four hundred and fifty-seven thousand is in our capital, and we've projected that out in the five-year plan.
Okay.
But it, it's money coming.
It's coming from the federal government. I wouldn't necessarily specifically say grant, though.
Right, okay.
We have to apply for.
Right. That's what I wanted to clarify, that it is actually coming in from the federal government. And we're putting this into a bucket, you might say, for this specific, uh, project for pulling these cabling.
We'll, we'll sign off on the total project cost. Our district will only pay maximum four hundred and fifty-seven K for most schools total. We'll still sign off. The company will not get that other eighty percent until we sign off completely on every single project, every single drop, meeting the scope of work. Then they'll be reimbursed directly through, through E-Rate, the other eighty percent.
Okay, and then, um, 'cause we just went through a process of approving an additional classroom to Lakewood Ranch. So, I mean, is that gonna be?
That's not included, that Lakewood Ranch cabling is included in the construction.
Hold on, hold on, just to clarify, it's not a new, that's not a new classroom. They're doing security measures to the administration building.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, just to clarify.
But this has nothing, I mean, we're not gonna be doing any new cables at this addition or anything like that, so.
If you're referring to the new addition, if, if we need to get into that area and depending on the scope of work, if there's some additional cabling that needs to be done, then yes, we would.
Yeah, like the, like the Palmetto, all of the different things that we're doing in Palmetto, you know. Has that been taken into consideration for this, these dollars on pulling?
Palmetto will be a future project in a future year.
For, okay, for this?
Any new building being constructed will be covered under the construction, and that building will be done and out of the way. The new addition at Lakewood Ranch, structure cabling is already being done to our specifications as of our current specs today.
It's in the project, not these dollars?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Because the renewal with, of five years, um, that was a, in particular interest to me that, okay, is this gonna be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year?
It's gonna change. Each year, we're, each year, we're gonna bring back a set of schools. Because remember, we've got a number of secondary schools, middle and high, that we need to, to again, move forward. Again, it's one of those things for planning purposes, you have to build. When do you make that decision? Most of that cabling and infrastructure, uh, the backbone cabling is twenty-plus years old at this point.
Oh, I'm sure. And, and that's.
But each year, we're gonna bring, that's why we specifically mentioned the two specific schools. Each year, we're going to bring, based on the funding that's allocated in the capital plan and the priorities and the recommendations that we bring forward to you. We're gonna specifically, each year, bring a specific cost and the schools that are being identified for that next year.
'Cause that's one of my things here is, oh, you collaborate with existing projects and their con, contracts when you're doing.
We do. We have members that sit on, uh, Mr. Rinaldi's and the construction. We have members that go to those meetings and, and we do collaborate and sit on those weekly.
Okay. That's, that's basically all I had. You, you covered everything that I thought, you know. If we're getting the grant money, let us take advantage of that. Um, and then it's, you know, yeah. Okay.
All right, I see no other, thank you very much, Ms. Hanson.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Hands up. So let's go ahead and vote for, uh, the approval of the proposal for the E-Rate Campus Cabling Upgrade. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And eighteen, Mrs. Saunders.
Yes, I recommend the approval of contract renewal with Sunshine Consulting Group for lobbying services. SDMC twenty-three dash oh oh nine three dash RG, estimated in the amount of fifty-four thousand annually.
So moved.
I'll second, just for clarity, for the record, it was Sunrise.
Did I?
You said Sunshine.
It is Sunrise.
I wanna be happy and in the.
That's fine. I just wanna make sure for the record, it's Sunrise.
I appreciate the correction.
So do we want Mr. Chapman to come up and explain who Sunrise Consulting is?
That'd be nice.
Okay? You just met him.
They were the ones on the.
They're the ones on the screen.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I understand who they were now. I know who they, go ahead.
Yep, that's, uh, so it's our annual contract with, uh, who you just met, Sean Foster and, uh, his team. He, he's the, uh, founder and president of Sunrise Consulting Group, and that's his, uh, team there. Uh, and so this is the contract, I think it's a two-year contract, uh, uh, for, uh, for his services up in Tallahassee.
Okay, now, and I kinda figured that's what it was once I heard that, uh, down, uh, briefing. Um, but, um, to me, again, it's just a little misleading. The contract says it's fifty-four thousand annually, but when you get into the contract, it's actually for two years. So that it would actually be a hundred and eight thousand. So to me, I would almost put that on the agenda. It's a fifty-four thousand dollar annually for two years totaling a hundred and eight thousand. That is how I would have worded the agenda. But that's all, now that I had that, I probably couldn't have had a talk on it, but that's good. Okay.
It does, the two-year that you're referring to, that's when you click on there?
It's on here, yeah. Once you go through the.
Yes, you click on the blue hyperlink on the agenda, right?
Right, that's what I did, and it pulled into the agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's where I saw, okay.
Well, so, but it is on there that, the public can see, they can click on that, just like we can. They can look and, and click on that and see what that means.
Right.
And they're, okay, I just wanna make sure that's what you're referring to.
Yep.
All right, I don't think, let me check, no other speakers lit up, so let's go ahead and vote on, uh, the approval, the contract renewal for Sunrise. Consulting Group for Lobbying Services. Go ahead and vote now, and it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to new business items, non-consent, approval of budget of business for October twenty-twenty-two, Superintendent?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the budget amendments for October twenty-twenty-two.
So moved. I'll second.
And I'm sure we'd like to bring up, yeah, go ahead and come on up and let us know just kind of what's going on, what we're mending. Thank you very much.
I, uh, board members, I'm Gina Malina, the Budget Director. Um, and I just gonna do some brief comments on the budget amendments this month. We had five hundred and ninety-three budget amendments across all our funds, um, which affected two thousand four hundred and sixty-eight chart strings. Um, we had some significant budget amendments that were over a million dollars. Um, and they were basically related to the addition of the special recognition awards that our school district received. Um, that affected the general fund. We had additional, uh, grants in the special revenue funds. And, uh, changes, uh, between the debt service and capital funds. Uh, related to the updated borrowing figures from our bond council. So that's basically our most significant budget amendments this month. Any questions?
I don't have anyone lit up.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've got a motion in a second. Let's vote on the approval of the budget amendments for October twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
We already got it. You're voting.
I'm sorry.
Long day.
And that passes. And that passes unanimously, thank you very much. Let's move on to the second new business non-consent item, approval of Palmetto High School, Superintendent Saunders?
Yes, I recommend the approval of Palmetto High School partial replacement project. Agreement between owner and Gilbane Building Company, amendment three, guaranteed maximum price in the amount of $34,898,266 for a total guarantee, guaranteed maximum price
Who wants it?
I was going to go to Mary.
Oh, well, yeah, it's, yes, so moved, thank you.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Bray. Ms. Bray, can you click on that second on your thing? Nope, you're good, that way it'll move to the vote. And any discussion on that? Obviously, we had a great presentation by the building team, thank you very much. We do have a question, Mr. Tatum?
Yes, what is the difference between the guaranteed maximum price and the total guaranteed maximum price? It's like very good and very, very good, but anyway, go ahead.
Well, the great thing is, the first number is what the bid came in at. The board approved the maximum price of the $35 million. But the budget, once they went and contracted it out, it came in a little below what the board authorized.
Okay, so
So I think the question that Ms. Bray said, do you ever come back under, they squeaked by out of the gate under what the board had authorized spend.
Just in the wording there, how, how would I, it's just one of those, you know, you're the general public and you're reading this and you, and you read, well, there's the guaranteed maximum price and then there's the total guarantee. Maybe it's an accounting term that I'm not familiar with. It's like reading, well, you know, the ice cream was very good, but the ice cream was really very, very good. How would we be able to distinguish that? Or maybe the accounting people, is there a way to differentiate between? I don't know, if I was just reading that as a member of the general public, I'd have the same question, so.
How can I see that?
As the board item says, this is the third amendment. So the first amendment was the pre-construction that we did back in August. And it was like for $80,000 for them to do scheduling, organize the bidding and all that. And then in addition to that, we had the storm and they came to our rescue and they put something, we had damaged fencing on the perimeter. And they did about $200,000 worth of fencing repairs and upgrades that we needed along our north property line as well. So that's why you see the actual guaranteed maximum price versus the total guaranteed maximum price had those other two amendments in there as well. But the actual construction cost for what you saw today is, as Ms. Saunders said, the 34,898. But our overall budget is 39 million, so. There's a couple, there's a couple of different pieces to the guaranteed maximum prices.
And when it's all said and done, it will cost, in theory, $34,898.
For the construction, that's
For this portion, I think Mr. Rinaldi did mention 39 million.
Right.
And so I want to make sure we understand what that means. This is the construction. We will have to buy furniture and some other items that aren't part of Gilbane's contract of construction. So that's what the board approved for the total project. So there will be some more spend up to what the board approved, but it won't be construction. The construction has to come in at this number that is listed today.
Okay, I still don't understand the difference between the total maximum price and the guaranteed maximum price and the total maximum price. But I'll do this offline and I'm just not as smart as the other people who understand it, so, great.
Sure, absolutely.
Thanks, okay.
And when we come back and purchase like the chairs and desks and things like that, that'll typically be in like a consent item that we've already approved, that purchase of those chairs, desk, et cetera. And then so the next time we meet, we need to say, hey, we're ready to spend it, it's in the consent item because we've already approved it prior. Any other questions? Oh, mom, I asked you and I can look, and I don't see any. So we got a motion, we got a second, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the Palmetto High School replacement project. And votes are in, it is approved unanimously, thank you very much.
Very nice.
Number three in new business, non-consent items, approval of MTC, Manatee Technical College, the Florida Law Enforcement Academy Agreement. Mrs. Saunders?
Yes, I recommend the approval of Manatee Technical College, Florida Law Enforcement Academy. Agreement between owner and A.D. Morgan, amendment two, for the partial guaranteed maximum price in the amount of $1,981,479.
So moved.
I'll second. Question, so I, now that maybe this portion is up, Mr. Tatum, this may help. So like, this is partial of what we're spending, the guaranteed, this is a partial of it? So I think this is a little bit easier, but going back to the total, that total guaranteed maximum was added from the fencing that they helped us do. So that total is what the construction portion is. So like this is partial because this is only part of obviously the maximum guaranteed price that we're doing for this overall project. So this is not, we'll get later on when we look at this again, and correct me if I'm wrong, it'll probably say total guaranteed maximum price for the whole project is, I don't have it off the top of my head, five something. So that's, that's kind of, I don't know if that helps.
Was it because of a change in requirements that?
No, just when, when the project, like, so for what we just did with Palmetto, that was just the construction. So the overall project's 39, but the construction total maximum price was 35 and change. But that's because we added 200,000, they helped us around 200,000 with fencing that was destroyed from the hurricane. If that wasn't there, it would just be the 34,898, the guaranteed maximum price. That would have been the total maximum price.
No, it's like, it's like if I call a plumber out to my house and I say, what's the guaranteed maximum price to replace these pipes? And he tells me it's $5,000. And then he sends me a bill later for $6,000. And he goes, well, in the fine, in the fine print down at the bottom, actually, the total guaranteed
No, it'd be like if you brought that guy out there and you were only working on your kitchen sink. And then when he was there, your bathroom sink busted and he went and did the bathroom sink. Now you've got a new total maximum price because he did a second project. And that's what Gilbane, they did a second project for us at that Palmetto site.
So it's a change in requirements as Ms. Messenger was talking about earlier. This is a conversation just as prominent as
That's fine, I just thought the partial, I saw the partial.
Okay.
Any questions on, yep, Ms. Bray?
Yeah, and to add to you, Mr. Tatum, on the sheet, it does have on here that this project started and was approved on, in July of '21. Then it was revised to add another $770,000, am I correct in this? From looking at the paperwork, okay. But I just have to make this general comment that, you know, we're proving all of this stuff for building and contracts and, you know, and I get it, our, some of our schools are in bad shape, I've been around some of them. But again, there's nothing on here for actually K through three teaching. And I know it ultimately gets there and I know we do that during the spring or whatever. But these are all projects that were approved before we came on, I understand that. I understand that, I do get that. But I just want everyone to know that we need to start focusing more on the educational side instead of the building side.
Well, I will say that, yeah, these were projects before you all got here that were approved. So now you're kind of jumped right in the middle of things happening, you're like, wait a minute, we haven't talked about Palmetto High School. Because you haven't, because we talked about it months ago. But these are also funds that are not able to go towards that. These are capital, all capital funds, that can't go towards the education side of it.
Right, I know.
Just to make sure
Capital is heavy.
All know.
On the heavy side to me, so that's my basic point on that.
Okay.
Okay?
Any, no other speakers are listed? So we'll just go ahead and vote for the approval of the Manatee, oh, I'm sorry, did we want, we never got?
I spoke to each person.
That's right.
But if anybody has a question, I'll be more than happy.
On it, and I didn't, I don't, I never opened it for discussion really, so we're good, okay. So let's vote on the approval of the Manatee Technical College, Florida Law Enforcement Academy Agreement. And it passes unanimously, thank you very much. Moving on to new business, non-supernintendent recommendation. So first one, acceptance of the resignation of Citizens Financial Oversight Committee member. Wonder who that is?
I believe that would be me.
Obviously, Ms. Bray cannot do both, so I don't think there's really any, well, I guess we got to have a
I move that we accept the resignation of Mrs. Bray from the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee.
You have a second?
I'll let somebody else second.
All right, I don't know if there's too much discussion needs to be had for that, but there is, all right. Let's vote on accepting the resignation of Ms. Bray from the Citizens Oversight Committee.
Just to add to that, will there be an opportunity to appoint someone to take my?
Yes, we will move forward to that, yep, absolutely.
Okay.
And that passes unanimously, thank you very much, everyone. Item number two on new business, no recommendation, approval of the 2022, 2023 board committee assignments. So remember, that's what we did at the reorg meeting. Any, well, let's go ahead and wait, motion it?
Look at you looking at me.
I just figured.
You just know I'll be loud. Approval of the, I move that we approve the 2022, 2023 board committee assignments.
I'll second that.
I'll second, but I do have
Okay, and then any discussion on it? Did anyone, everyone?
Just one, just one, the school board liaison for IT and cybersecurity. I understand, Ms. Foreman, you're good on the cybersecurity, obviously from your presentation. But also on the IT side, I don't know if sometime if you ever need a backup for that. I've got a little experience in IT from previous roles. But I just wanted to bring that up because I didn't see on our notes at the reorg meeting that that was actually assigned, it was a blank. And then I saw, okay.
I think it's together.
Yeah, it is together, and that's what I just wondered. But that's all right, I just
Yeah, you can always definitely be a secondary if we need it.
Yeah, all right.
Any other discussions, everybody's good with their assignments? You may not know if you're good or not until after you go and you're like, man, this is not what I wanted, but it's too late now.
Not what I thought.
Yeah, Mr. Tatum?
Clarification for me, at this point, then it's probably incumbent upon the member now, if I'm on a committee and it's the whatever association of Florida, I need to get in contact with them and say, I'm the new rep to do this.
Most of the time, I believe Ms. Means, you will update some of that and most of that. And then they'll start, you'll start getting the emails for like the meeting schedules and things like that. Like, for instance, the MTC, I was on it, now you're on it. You'll be getting those emails of when the dates are and things like that instead of me.
Should we make personal contact with the organization though? Go meet the
Sure.
Go meet head of it.
Why not?
Yeah. Sit down, have a meeting with the local, like the Latin Chamber of Commerce, I think that's one of my committees, okay.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, great. Okay, so let's vote for the approval of the 2022, 2023 board committee assignments. That passes unanimously, thank you very much. So workshop items, superintendent, was there any workshop items brought up to you during the briefings?
Any of those are placed on the list. There were a couple mentioned. So I thought in our next briefing, we will assign them dates and times for January moving forward.
Because I did bring up one that I do want to add to a workshop, so she is
The only one, the only ones because we have now in January, and we'll put it on the calendar.
That was a prior, was the budget review. Yeah, we have a list of them.
Perfect.
Go, so your item will go on there.
My item is on there, okay.
We don't have any, any other?
So the process to request a workshop, either do it at this point in the meeting and what is the process to request?
Do you have the briefing with
Or you can email myself or Ms. Means either way and it'll be on the list. And then, so then when the chair and I meet for our briefing, we then calendar them out based on time and slot.
We'll see it, did you get one of this?
Probably, yeah.
I think she just passed them out. And then you'll get this, you'll get those, you'll see the list of what it is. I know right now we don't have any on there because we haven't met to say which ones we want to go over. So the last board, we did not push anything else prior out. So you'll see where it says, you know, February, March, and we'll start building that calendar out.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think you and, Ms. Saunders, you and I have a board briefing on the 19th, I think. So that would be for the first meeting in January and that would be a time where I would bring up to you if I had
You had any topics?
And I believe Ms. Means has sent out the calendars invites for all of the workshops. So we at least have those, we just don't know what we're filling in, we just don't know what we're filling in those. And that's what we'll do in your briefings and then, because you may, you know, obviously, you're going to have, you know, in March, you're going to say, hey, what about a workshop on this? And that's what you'll, you know, you'll bring there and we'll either fit it into something else or if there's a discussion at the board where we say, hey, you know, we really feel, I really feel, superintendent feels, obviously, Mr. Tatum brought this up, is this something we want to jump other items, you know?
But we do have the luxury, if we wanted to add a workshop item, we could do that in this setting. I just want to, I just want to understand because I do know in past meetings, I've seen the board appear
I'm okay with, yeah, so I'm okay with you, I don't want to sit and use our time to figure out what
No, I'm just saying, I want to request and
Yeah, I think you can make your request whenever you want, you don't have to wait for the meeting.
Right.
You can do it, email them right now.
Okay.
So no continued public comment, of course, no one is here, so let's go with our updates. Legal update, Mr. Dye, anything for us?
Yes, real quick, legally, in order to have a shade meeting on litigation, your attorney has to announce at a public meeting that request. So that's what this is and should be on your calendars, it's this Friday, December 16th at 10:00 a.m. It'll be, Erin Jackson will be reporting the status of the pending litigation that she's handling. And then we can discuss strategy in those cases. That's all.
That's it?
Yep.
And how was your trip? Good? This seems a big day for you, I think.
I need bigger, I need bigger pants after being in Charleston for the
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Dye. Operations update, Mr. Wagner, please.
Chairman Cho, members of the board, superintendent, I'll just keep mine brief since we're running late on time, just a couple items. So Project Digitize, as reported by Mr. Hanson, is ahead of schedule. All active student records are scanned and we have two schools that we're going to knock out here before the Christmas break, which brings our total number of schools to 33. And as we close out the current 2022 school calendar, we ended up with 19 in-person job fairs, five virtual fairs for a total of 24 job fairs since June of the summer. We had 1,074 applicants and participants at those job fairs. HR processed about 1,400 new hires or transfers since July 1st, 2022. So we've really been working hard, the whole team's been working hard to fill our vacancies. Our next job fair is January 11th at the Wakeland Support Center. It's going to be for operations and paraprofessionals. And I appreciate you giving me a few time, a few minutes today, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Superintendent, any closing remarks?
Yes, I just want to reiterate and congratulate our educator of the year finalists for this school year. And they represent just amazing employees we have in our system. Tiffany Greer is a second grade teacher at Braden River Elementary. Kendall Carrier is a director of vans at Parish Community High School. Michelle Dowell is a biomedical science teacher at Palmetto High. And Kelly Williams is an anatomy and physiology teacher at Lakewood Ranch High. So we're so very proud of them and again, they represent a large number of outstanding teachers. Our support employee of the year finalist is Gina Case, is a guidance clerk at Maaca Elementary. Brianna Hall is a clerical assistant at Lincoln. Marisol Hernandez is the school secretary at Braden River High School. And Latisha Jones is a guidance clerk at Southeast High School. We're so very proud of them, we want to wish them well, have a wonderful holiday. And I know you're all wondering, when do the students break for Christmas break? Yes, December 23rd. So we go right up until the end. We have exams for our secondary schools that last week, so it's very important. But do know that they do not return until January 10th, our staff returns on January 5th. So we want to make sure that everyone has a very safe, relaxing holiday vacation. So we want to make sure that everyone has a very safe, relaxing holiday vacation and come back rejuvenated for the new year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just to Ms. Foreman's point on the calendar, it would have been great to be able to move, have those dates be a little bit different.
You're right.
Move it, move it back to maybe get out the twentieth and come back the seventh, but unfortunately, we don't have that luxury, so.
I feel for the teachers who have to teach the week of Christmas.
Right? It's uh it's good, good stuff and that and for high schools, always exam, so it's even better. Uh my son's freaking out right now. So um let's go board comments. I've got Ms. Foreman, Messenger, Tatum, Spray, and then myself. So Ms.
I'm just gonna leave it at, I wish everyone a happy holidays, a great time off. Um and um look forward to seeing everybody in the new year.
Thank you. Ms. Messenger?
I'm gonna just, you know, keep it short and sweet and say ditto that.
Uh Mr. Tatum?
So I would like to congratulate the people who are here today, the finance people, Mr. Wagner, just all the people that are presenting. And just remind us all that, you know, we we have a public trust here and it's with a budget at the size of one billion, two hundred million dollars approximately. It's gonna be very hard for us, no matter how hard we try to keep an eye on that stuff. And so when you're expending money and watching, you're kind of like our personal accountants over here. Just make sure that, you know, if I had to go explain this to five members of the public that we randomly picked out of the phone book, could I justify this to them, you know? If I had to sit down and explain this to them in late terms, why do we spend five hundred thousand dollars here, seven hundred thousand dollars there? And then just really help us keep an eye on things because ultimately, we're responsible. But you know, it's kind of like we're all billionaires up here and someone's got to watch the money for us, you know? So we are responsible, but you know, just keep that in mind and so we don't get into that situation. I guess it was what, five or six years ago where we had, you know, too much, we were spending too much money. We got three million dollars in the hole or whatever. And so your job is really important and help us out as our personal finance people. Sound good? You're our accountants for five billionaires. We're billionaires up here. How about that? All right. And then the last point is you had safety first, you know, coming from a former aviator in the military and in the airline, safety first. Uh the reason I'd stopped being an airline pilot because it was a mind-numbingly boring job, but that's what we want, right? We want, we want safety first and so everything's nice and smooth when you're out there driving, when you're out there flying or whatever you're doing. And be safe and come home safely on New Year's Eve because we want to see everybody back in the new year and that's all I have to say about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Ms. Spray?
Okay, a couple of things. I want to say thanks to Maaca. They went through an awful lot and, you know, to come out and have the assistant principal and really principal here. I think that was just incredible, uh that they've gone through so much. And they all, we also went to, I attended, the Southeast High School audition. This being the groundbreaking ceremony and we all got this great little cookie. I still have it here. And this is baked by the culinary students at that school. And the whole groundbreaking ceremony was very nice. It was well put together and the kids had such pride. Uh so that kind of makes your job worthwhile when you're approving some of these projects. It's like you're doing it for these kids. You know, for them to have a good environment to learn, but to, you know, on the flip side of that, we have to make sure they have the curriculum to learn, not just the building to learn it in. So but it was a very uh nice moment to be there and my first event of using the shovel that you always see people doing was a good experience. I enjoyed that a whole lot. So I just want to say thank you for that and to also say uh thank you all for your patience uh for me pulling all the consent items. I wanted to just understand the process because to me consent is like, okay, it's all good, but it's all new to us. And I hope that everybody here and the staff understands, we're going through a learning process, so hope that you're patient with us. And I want to thank you all. I've talked to many of you and even to Mr. Di uh yesterday uh on this process. So I wanted to say thank you for all of that and to say Merry Christmas to all of our staff and students and everybody in the community for that fact. That's all. Thank you.
Keep it short and sweet. Just thank you to the staff. I mean, I I can't believe we're already through a semester, basically. So thank you very much for our teachers out there. I know, you know, this, when you come out from Thanksgiving and you move, got these three or four weeks before Christmas break, it can be a little bit crazy, so thank you very much. I hope they they go get their rest uh during the the break. Um and to the staff and to to make everybody, this is my first meeting is chair official meetings. I I appreciate it. Um other than the little snafu at uh the shade, they went okay. Um so thank you to my other board members. I appreciate it. And uh Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody, and we are adjourned.